I call the 2,340th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted in person and by video conference. The public has been invited to watch this meeting in person at City Hall, on the city's YouTube channel, on Podcast Cable Channel 30 and City Limits, or through the Zoom webinar. There will be opportunities for the public to get oral testimony during today's meeting. When it is time to take public comments, staff will look for in-person meeting attendees to submit the yellow comment card, monitor the email inbox, Zoom participant list, and the Zoom chat to see if anyone would like to speak. We will take comments in order that they are received and seen. The public may submit written comments on the yellow comment card or via email to cpr@milwaukeeoregon.gov. Spanish translation services are available on request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. Contamos con servicio de traducción en español cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad para reuniones por lo menos 40 uches antes de la feria. Translation services are also available in other languages. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. Do you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, the Chief of Public, George Sanders, one nation, and one God. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Caliapulya Central Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. All right, announcements. You want me to get those up?
I will, yes sir.
Okay. The next open mic and poetry reading on Zoom will take place this Friday, August 6th, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Featured readers for July are the St. John, the Evangelist, Episcopal Church Community. The open mic will follow. Email Tom Hogan to register. The second of five Carefree Sunday pop-up events is coming up on Sunday, August 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Wichita Park. Grab a desk and go for an ace at a pint-sized golf course. All are welcome to attend. Have you been wanting to upgrade your gas-powered yard tools? PGE is hosting an electric tool exchange on Sunday, August 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at City Hall during the Milwaukee Sunday Farmer's Market. Unity members can bring their old gas-powered lawn mowers, leaf blowers, chainsaws, and trimmers to be recycled for free and receive a gift card to purchase a new electric tool from Ace Hardware. Just be sure to empty all fluids from the tool before bringing them to the exchange. Visit the city calendar to find the link to RSVP. The third of five Carefree Sunday pop-up events takes place on Sunday, August 15th.
Recording in progress.
From 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Stanley Park. Get ready for some outdoor fun that's full of giggles, games, and other activities. Join the Johnson Creek Watership Council on Saturday, August 21st, 8:30 a.m. to noon to help create a healthier Johnson Creek. Daniel volunteered cleanup will once again include in-water trash picking, which is so important to the health of our street. Volunteers are required to register by site to keep the groups small so that social distancing is possible. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage where you can find the city calendar at milwaukeeoregon.gov. Or call 503-786-7555. Our staff will provide you with the information you need or connect you with someone who can help.
Can I add a couple more items? One is, this Saturday night is a drive-in movie. Insecurities doing Saturday night movies. Some of them are in the park, like Ring of Blanket, and some of them are drive-ins. And this Saturday, it's a drive-in movie at the Aquatic Center. It's Night at the Museum. It costs $5 a carload. And you do need to register in advance because they have limited chances. But you can find out on the NCPRD website or Facebook page. That's North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. Sorry, I'm so used to speaking in acronyms. And the other thing is, in addition to Johnson Creek Cleanup, there's a cleanup of Fernburg Park on Wednesday evening from 5 to 7. It's August 18th, two weeks from tomorrow. It's NCPRD, it's the Linwood Neighborhood Association, it's the North Clackamas Watersheds Council. It's kind of a group, a collective effort to clean up Fernburg Park for anyone who wants to join in that, 5:00 p.m. Fernburg Park is in the Linwood Neighborhood, just off of Linwood Avenue. And I'll just also put in a pitch off for the Carefree Sunday things that the mayor announced. I went to the one yesterday and kids were having a lot of fun. There was a lot of fun to be had, so hopefully there will be more this weekend. Cool.
Thank you. Anybody else? Is the chief turning us virtually, or?
Yes, he's on the screen.
Okay.
Let me go ahead and start with sharing that. And I will bring him over to the main screen.
All right, our next item will be the Milwaukee Police Department's Life Saving Awards. This will be presented by our police chief Luke Straight.
Good evening, Mayor Gamba, members of council and members of the community. My name is Luke Straight and I'm the chief of police for the city of Milwaukee. As you mentioned, I'm here this evening to recognize the actions of several members of our department in two different incidents that have happened over the course of the last few months. As you all know, this past year has been challenging in a million different ways for everyone. Each in their own kind of unique ways. I know for our folks, it's important that we kind of take a time out occasionally in the middle of whatever's going on to celebrate things that went well, to celebrate our successes. And I know that's important for everyone else with the city and in the community as well. So that's what I briefly wanted to do here this evening. There are two different incidents that I want to talk about. And the first one involves Officer Ronnie Glenn, who was able to join us tonight, and Officer Brian Johnson, who I think is in the middle of his sleep schedule. And I believe technically Officer Glenn was as well, but I might have badgered him until he woke up. The commendation explains these stories well, so I'd like to just go ahead and read that first commendation now to tell the story. On April 20th, 2021, Milwaukee police officers were dispatched to assist paramedics on a possible overdose call. The initial information involved a 24-year-old male who was unconscious, not breathing, and CPR was actively being administered. Officer Brian Johnson was the first officer to arrive at the scene. And he assessed the patient who was pale, was losing all color from lack of blood, and had no pulse. Two community members, Alyssa Wilson and Kirsty Hool, who had happened to be nearby visiting neighbors, have begun administering CPR minutes before the arrival of Officer Brian Johnson and Officer Ron Glenn. When Officer Johnson learned the man likely had overdosed, he immediately administered a single dose of Narcan, which is used to counter the effects of opioid overdose. He then took over performing chest compressions and rescue breathing while Officer Glenn worked to stabilize the scene and assisted with the deployment of an automated external depressurator, still waiting for paramedics to arrive. The man regained partial consciousness. This was just before paramedics arrived and was transported to an area hospital. In reviewing the timeline for this incident, it took just under two minutes from when Officer Johnson and Officer Glenn were dispatched on the call to the time Narcan was administered. The immediate response of Officer Johnson and Glenn, their quick actions combined with the selfless intervention of Ms. Wilson and Ms. Hool is a great example of how a community like Milwaukee comes together under challenging circumstances and their teamwork that evening to save a life. Since the call, officers have been in communication with the family and friends of the patient and have received updates on his condition. Those officers learned the patient was stable, recovering, and very grateful to be alive. Officer Johnson, Officer Glenn, Ms. Wilson, and Ms. Hool should all be commended for their quick decisive actions and their compassionate response to a person on the verge of death. Our community is better because each of you are in it. Aside from the commendation, I want to really thank those officers who are here that we can see on the screen and those who have maybe joined anonymously because they're shy as well. Some of our officers are taking calls as we speak now. And for some of them, this is kind of the middle of their night. So for those who are unable to join us, I know they will watch the meeting afterwards. And I'm going to go right into the second commendation. And I'll go ahead and read the story on that. I want to give a slight disclaimer on this. This one does involve a violent incident where there were weapons involved. And this commendation does briefly talk about the injuries. Despite that disclaimer, I don't think it's worse than the evening news on any given day of the week. And I also want to preface this. The instances like this are very unusual in the city of Milwaukee. But that low frequency combined with really high-risk incidents can end badly quickly. So when they end as well as possible, that's all the more reason for us to talk about them and acknowledge how well things went under challenging circumstances. I'm going to go ahead and read that commendation. On the evening of June 5th, 2021, at 7:25 p.m., Milwaukee officers David McVey, Daniel Duke, Brad Walther, and Sergeant Jeff Rogerson were dispatched to the transit center located at Main and Jackson in Milwaukee on a report of a stabbing which had just occurred. The witness who called reported the victim was on the ground yelling and that a suspect who was armed was walking away but still in the general area. Medical services were dispatched on the call but advised not to go to the victim's aid because the scene was not safe. Paramedics responded but staged, waiting for police to arrive and secure the scene for their safety. Within three minutes of receiving the first 911 call, five-year veteran officer David McVey was the first officer to arrive on scene, initially alone. Upon arrival, he lifted the victim who was on the ground yelling and bleeding from several stab wounds. The victim pointed out the suspect who Officer McVey had seen was approximately 50 yards away and was walking away from them. The victim told Officer McVey that during the course of the attack, the suspect also took a handgun from the victim. Officer McVey immediately relayed the suspect description, the current location, and the fact that the suspect was armed with both a knife and a handgun to responding officers who had begun to arrive at that location. Officer McVey, despite being in a dangerous and chaotic situation, began medically assessing the victim's injuries. Officer McVey found the victim had several deep stab wounds, one in his chest and one in his back, and a deep laceration of life-threatening arterial bleeding on his right arm. Officer McVey quickly applied a tourniquet to the victim's arm to stop the heavy bleeding. He then used trauma shears to remove the victim's shirt to allow paramedics to more quickly treat the victim when they arrived. He then began treating those wounds using gauze and direct pressure to stop the bleeding. Officer McVey also obtained critical details through an interview about what had happened and relayed that information to the other responding units. He also talked to the victim, advising the victim to breathe deeply to counteract the effects of shock. At 7:28 p.m., which was four minutes after the initial 911 call, Sergeant Jeff Rogerson, Officer Brad Walther, Officer Daniel Duke located the suspect, who was still armed a short distance away, and safely took him into custody with no further incident. Once the suspect was in custody, the scene was declared safe for paramedics. And Officer McVey requested paramedics respond, go through to his location. He advised them of the nature of the injuries, that a tourniquet had been applied, and also requested that detectives be notified and respond immediately. Sergeant Rogerson, Officer Duke, and Officer Walther are commended for their professionalism in this incident. The emergency room doctor at OHSU later told investigators the victim's injuries were definitely life-threatening, and if not for the officer's actions, the man likely would not have survived. Officer McVey is to be commended for his exceptional professionalism, valor, and performance under extreme stress. Officer McVey is a credit to the law enforcement profession and the Milwaukee Police Department. Once again, instances like this are very rare, which means we don't always have the opportunity to perfect how we respond to situations that are as critical as this. That means the risk of mistakes happening or things not going as smooth as possible goes up a little bit. And in this incident, things, despite the way they started out and what the incident was, were handled extremely well by our people. And I just wanted to take some time out of our evening to acknowledge their fantastic work and the impact in both of these instances that they made in the lives of members of our community.
I just want to commend you, chief, and your entire team. I say this over and over and over, but in my opinion, Milwaukee has the best police force in the state. And it's incidents like these that prove that point out time after time. And I just couldn't be more proud of our team.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you to those officers who were able to respond so quickly in a moment when I would have been frozen. I'm sitting here at a loss for the grief I feel at the circumstances people in our community find themselves in. And thank you for making it possible for those people to go on living, literally.
Thank you, thoughts of President Izzy. Sometimes these things aren't super pleasant to talk about. And we hate to drop a heavy mood on the council meeting and agenda, but it is important that we talk about the challenges of life and of this job in particular and acknowledge the wonderful people. So thank you for making time for us.
And I also want to make sure that we thank and acknowledge the two women that started CPR on the first case. That particularly in a pandemic, I'm sure a lot of people would have second thoughts about them. It's really commendable their bravery as well.
Absolutely. We did also invite them to the meeting, but for reasons including the pandemic and also maybe just being shy and not wanting to be unchaperated at public meetings, they respectfully declined that opportunity. But we did profuse to thank them for their actions.
Hopefully they're watching at least. What sticks out to me, and I just want to just thank you so much for, and those two women and the public too, is the compassion, not just the response time. I mean, that's obviously very impressive. And I think all of the skills that everyone used and deployed and all the tools that we had available, and I'm really grateful for that. But I think that at the core, there was real compassion shown to these people who were suffering in a very, not a great place, probably the worst moment of their lives. And the fact that two strangers, including, in addition to members of our law enforcement, actually felt compelled to intervene is just, that's really wonderful. I'm sure that the families and friends of those two people are extremely grateful.
Thank you.
And chief, this is again, you can't see me on the screen, but I am speaking. And I do also really appreciate, I know that our officers often feel like this is their job and that this is something that they're supposed to do. But I think it's also important for us as a community to acknowledge the hard things that they're doing and to thank them. So I also just thank them for coming onto the call and putting themselves out there tonight to receive what is very appropriate recognition and appreciation. So thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Our next item is National Farmers Market Week proclamation. Who is celebrating Milwaukee?
Melanie Bennett.
Okay.
Melanie Bennett.
Melanie Bennett, who's celebrating Milwaukee. Who's that?
Melanie, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. All right, well, good evening, Mayor Gamba and City Council. My name is Melanie Bennett. I'm a resident of Milwaukee and also the board president of Celebrate Milwaukee Incorporated, or CMI, which is the current organization of the Milwaukee Farmers Market. I'm happy to be here virtually tonight to hear your proclamation in support of National Farmers Market Week. Farmers markets are increasingly important part of the food network in our country. And we're very fortunate here in Milwaukee to have our own market. and we're very fortunate here in Milwaukee to have our own market, which is still going strong in its 23rd season. Over the course of the pandemic, it's been especially important to have access to fresh food, including food support programs such as SNAP, WIC, and Double Up Food Bucks, as well as the opportunity for people to shop outdoors if they're more comfortable with that, and of course, the ability to support local farmers, producers, and other small businesses. And we are very fortunate to be able to provide all of that at the market with support from our many partners. CMI deeply appreciates the support we received from the city, which has helped the market grow into one of our community's strongest and best loved institutions. Especially over this past year and a half, as food and concerns grew and changed weekly, the city was a fantastic partner and we're grateful for that. Thank you for your support today of National Farmers Market Week, and thank you also for your support year-round of the Milwaukee Farmers Market.
Well, thank you. It's another thing folks in Milwaukee have a lot of pride in and enjoy very much. I know that every Sunday, it's almost like a mild party. It's just, people are just smiling and happy and getting to socialize and see friends and buy amazing fruits and vegetables and meats and everything else. So, thank you for doing it. Whereas, farmers markets are an integral part of Oregon's food system and agricultural economy. And whereas, the 130-plus farmers markets in Oregon are important sales outlets for farmers and food business owners, generating revenue that supports the sustainability of family farms and the revitalization of rural communities. And whereas, farmers markets provide citizens of all income levels with access to healthful, locally-produced foods through the Milwaukee Farmers Market and over 70 other Oregon markets setting supplemental nutrition assistance program benefits and other critical food access programs. And whereas, the Milwaukee Farmers Market, celebrating 23 years, is a cornerstone of our community, well-loved by customers, neighbors, and vendors alike. Whereas, the City Council recognizes the importance of expanding agricultural marketing opportunities that assist and encourage the next generation of farmers and ranchers to generate farm income to help stimulate business development and job creation, build community connections through rural and urban linkages, provide access to fresh, healthy food for all Oregon citizens and more. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, municipal corporation, the county clackamas, and the state of Oregon, with consent of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of August 1 through 7, 2021, as National Farmers Market Week in conjunction with the National Farmers Market. And do call upon all Milwaukeeans to celebrate farmers markets with appropriate observance and activities. Thank you. Our next proclamation is the Climate Collaborative Campaign proclamation. It is presented by our climate natural resources manager, Natalie Rogers.
Hi. It's a new title since we last offered it. Yes, very exciting. Good evening, Mayor Gamba, Council President Izzy, and the Council. So my name is Natalie Rogers, and I'm the natural resources manager. And I'm excited to introduce the Climate Collaborative, which we've actually been talking about for a few years now, but we had to get a kick it off this year. So, as we know, Milwaukee has an amazing climate action plan which was adopted in 2028. And that climate action plan has three pretty aggressive but amazing goals, including a net-zero carbon from electricity by 2030, net-zero carbon from all building fuels by 2035, and community carbon neutrality by 2045. So cities across Oregon are adopting similar climate action plans, and many of them are actually modeled even after Milwaukee's. We get calls all the time essentially from staff saying, hey, this is a fantastic climate action plan. We want to learn how Milwaukee can do it because we're also a small community and we want to do it too. So as cities start to adopt these climate action plans and communities start to have these climate action efforts, essentially became, realized that we should have this umbrella campaign which supports communities in raising awareness of their climate action plans. So led by Portland General Electric in partnership with the City of Milwaukee and Energy Trust of Oregon, this year we're doing the Climate Collaborative. So this is a model that other communities can actually adopt themselves and be involved in the campaign, and Milwaukee's just the first one kicking it off. So it's a celebration of local climate action plans as well as community events, volunteerism, community-based organizations, all under the umbrella of climate action. So we started planning this in 2019 for a lot of in-person events and activities, including even a youth summit. And unfortunately, with the pandemic, we had to kind of bring it into the virtual space and kind of trim it down to make it so at least for this first time, we can ensure its success. So for now, the Climate Collaborative is primarily an online event focused around a climate pledge, which is available on climatecollaborativenorthwest.com. I don't know if we can pull that up or not.
Yes, and you said Climate Collaborative Northwest.
Yes. I have it by memory. I can type it in, but your name is just a speed with those keys.
It's like, not the original Climate Collaborative.
Details.
It's good to have the memory.
There we go. Perfect. So it's focused around an online pledge that folks can take to essentially show their support for Milwaukee's climate action plan. It also links out to external organizations that also do climate action-related work, including our Watershed Councils, the Clackamas Watershed Council, our Johnson Creek Watershed Council, Friends of Trees, and then also links to resources to help folks take that first step towards climate action. So when folks go onto the website, they can enter in their information to help sign the pledge, and then they can also share it, get links to share on their own social media. And then, so while this is an online campaign, we're kind of sprinkling it through with some events that folks in the community can participate in, kicking it off with our electric tool exchange. We did some demos last weekend, and this coming weekend on Sunday from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, folks in the community can turn in their gas-powered, old gas-powered lawn equipment and get gift cards for discounts for electric replacements that are both cleaner for air quality, but then also help us achieve our climate action goals. So I encourage folks to visit climatecollaborativew.com to sign the climate pledge, and then also visit us at the Farmers Market this coming Sunday to learn a little bit more and get some cool AIST hardware gift cards to go shopping and do a little bit of summer cleanup in your yard.
Yeah. Well, and those small motors that are on those kinds of devices are some of the most polluting motors there are. They run really rough. Much of the gasoline just gets ported into the air. They don't have any form of collection or control or filtration or anything. They literally are the loose kinds of motors to run. And so I've had electric mower for probably 10 years. And in the early days, they were a little weak. And people didn't think much of them, but they've gotten really, really good in recent years. And I would put them up against virtually any gasoline-powered mower. Same with those string trimmers. Haven't gotten to use a chainsaw, so I don't know.
Those are really fun. So our own landscaping contract for transitioning towards electric tools were also transitioned towards electric tools for our own city where possible. And then I personally just bought an electric chainsaw about, hmm, three weeks ago, and we took down some invasive Portuguese laurel, and it was like cutting butter. It was just so satisfying. So I encourage everyone, if you can get the chance, to try them out. Because as somebody, I also think that there's like some safety benefits too. It's electric chainsaws in particular. You can take your hand off the trigger, it turns off. So I felt much more comfortable with my husband waving his hand around than the gas equipment.
When I stopped by the booth on Sunday, the chainsaw was getting all the attention, I will say. It's the only thing I don't have. I have the blower, the weed whacker, mower, electric. I'm like, ooh, maybe I need that. I will also say, in addition to the air quality, they're also all much quieter. They're much better for your hearing loss issues and your neighbors and being a good neighbor and all of that. They're also much quieter than their gas-powered counterparts.
Natalie, what is happening to the used equipment that's being transported?
There, we are going to have a vendor who's going to be recycling them. So if folks want to, they can help us out by emptying out the fuels from their old equipment before they bring them. But if they are a little concerned about how to do that, the recycler will help them. But all the equipment will be recycled.
And I believe I saw a nice fancy new billboard on my way into town on 99. Yeah, the nice Climate Collaborative.
Yes. So hopefully, folks will be seeing it a little bit more around town. And Milwaukee's the first one to pilot it, so we get all of the accolades and all the celebration. And then as more communities work to join the collaborative, they also will get their own celebrations too. But of course, the Milwaukee ones will always be the best. And I'll also say too, there's other events that we're going to be sprinkling through, including potentially a SAWL event coming up. And then it's probably going to be, the Climate Collaborative is going to be ending, but it will be returning next year, but it'll be ending in October, likely with the celebration of our birthday.
All right, I'll read the proclamation. "Whereas, the City of Milwaukee adopted a climate action plan in 2018, establishing goals of net-zero emissions from electricity, net-zero emissions from building fuels, and community carbon neutrality. And whereas, the City Council declared a climate emergency in 2020, accelerating the climate action plan goals in response to the urgency of climate change. And whereas, Portland General Electric and the City have worked in partnership to accomplish zero-carbon electricity through climate action, population, energy efficiency, renewable energy, community participation, innovative technology programming. And whereas, Portland General Electric, the City, and the Energy Trust of Oregon are launching the Climate Collaborative, a joint initiative to raise community awareness and community climate action, increase participation in climate-aligned energy initiatives to help the city reach its goals. And whereas, the Climate Collaborative will integrate online education, volunteerism, in-person events, and an online climate pledge to celebrate and enhance Milwaukee's dedication to climate action. Now therefore, I, Mark Gamba, Mayor of the City of Milwaukee, municipal corporation, the county clackamas, and the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim August 1 as the start of the Climate Collaborative campaign to raise awareness of Milwaukee's climate action plan and celebrate community dedication to achieving the city's climate and energy goals."
Thank you.
And you. And we'll see you Sunday.
Yes.
Community comments. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community members' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a yellow speaker card available on the table in the hall and identify agenda item number five, community comments. If you are attending through the Zoom meeting and wish to speak, please raise your hand or indicate you wish to speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and city residence and record. If you would like the city to follow up with you, please submit your contact information to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because information provided during the comments may be new, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments if they require following. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from July 20th, community comments?
There are none.
So do we have anybody online?
No, Mayor Gamba, nobody has their hand raised.
All right, I have Hanyi Zoldak. Did I pronounce that right?
Thank you, Hanyi.
Come on up. Use one of these microphones.
Oh, no, it's picking up the room, so just please have a seat.
At the table now.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. If I understood correctly, I have three minutes?
Three minutes, yeah.
All right, well, I thank everyone for being here. Basically, there was an issue that occurred in the Hector Campbell neighborhood where I live that I believe could be part of a larger issue, or maybe even there could be a solution. Basically, there's six different households that have written and signed letters in regards to noise from one specific household. Now, that specific household has multiple roosters. And basically, they just leave the roosters out before they go to work. They're gone all day. Whatever happens, happens. We have retirees who are literally feel like they can't enjoy their own backyard. We have, you know, families with small children who have woken up from their naps during the day, at night, in the morning. It's really frustrating. Eventually, after about eight months of complaining to multiple households, Tim Saliers, the code enforcement officer, issued a noise citation, multiple warnings, issued a noise citation. The hearing was held in this very room a couple of weeks ago. I was called to be a witness by Tim Saliers, and the judge was from another county. I don't know where she was from. But she didn't understand the laws of Milwaukee. She thought roosters were not allowed. Then she found out a couple of minutes before the hearing that roosters were not explicitly banned. So after the hearing, she basically stated that because roosters aren't explicitly banned, that she's not going to issue the noise citation. And I just feel like the laws may not be specific enough because there's laws about keeping animals and noise from keeping animals, which a rooster is an animal. But then there's laws about livestock, and you know, if it's livestock, it has to be commercial. So basically, this out-of-town judge, went against the officer, said that any noise by the roosters are acceptable because they're not explicitly banned. Again, if it was a personal issue, I understand. But given all the households around it, all the letters, all the recording, we sent video footage, we sent audio, I just feel like maybe there's some opportunity in the way the laws are written to remove the ambiguity so that any judge could come and not really have issue trying to come up with a decision. That's really all I came here to talk about today.
I'm sure we've got a record of who the judge was. Said interesting ruling. I mean, cars aren't specifically banned, but if a car doesn't have a muffler and is overly loud, that's when it falls into the sound. So I'm not sure.
Very strange. Yeah, I don't know where she was from, but she stated multiple times that she was not from this county, and she actually took two weeks to come up with a decision. She said she needed time to read all the laws because she wasn't familiar with them, and after two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. We will look into this.
Thank you.
I kind of thought you and I were on council, on climate commission, and code on that was... And I kind of thought, roosters weren't banned, to be honest.
I've always thought that, I've always known that they weren't banned.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we've talked about this on this council.
Yeah, they're not banned, but if they're overly loud, then the noise ordinance kicks in. So if you have a quiet rooster, you're allowed to have a rooster. But that's, so I'm not sure.
Well, I think that we definitely need to just make sure we get a little bit more information. I think Judge Graves has been our municipal judge for several years, at least as long as I've been on council. So let's make sure we have all of our information. It's certainly fair to want to get the code right because we've got thousands of pages of it.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mayor Gamba, we have the Reverend Adam Erickson. And let me go ahead and promote to panelists.
Hi, I am Pastor Adam Erickson at Clackamas United Church of Christ. And I wanted to thank you, Mayor Gamba, and City Council members for all the work that you do. And also, I know that you are going to be prioritizing And also, I know that you are going to be prioritizing what you're going to be doing in the next year. And I just wanted to come on and encourage you to do what you can for the housing crisis in Milwaukee. We know that one of the important solutions to housing crisis is housing affordability. In the Portland area, just in this last year, there was a 19.4% increase in housing. And just from May, from April to May, it increased 9.3%, according to the Oregonian. We know that there are solutions to the housing crisis, and one of the most important solutions is affordable housing. So I just wanted to come on and encourage you to do what you can to help keep housing affordable for those of us who are struggling in this financial situation, especially with COVID, but beyond COVID as well. So thank you for your time and thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you, Reverend Erickson. For all that you don't know, that he's quite an outstanding reverend in our community. He's got the signboard out on Webster Road that is often seen as somewhat controversial, but is always right on there. I want to go back to your testimony, though. You said something that, I don't think you said it exactly the way you meant to say it. When you said there was an increase, you said in housing. Did you mean in houselessness? Or in cost of housing? You're muted. Adam, you're muted.
Yeah, yes, thank you. The cost of housing has gone up 19.4% according to the Oregonian and studies that it cites.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you for correcting me, thank you.
That's okay, it's awesome. Make sure you got said what you needed to say.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? Thanks. Any, are there others?
No, there are none.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Tonight's Consent Agenda includes minutes of the city council for July 1st, 2021 special session, the July 10th, 2021 council dinner, and the July 13th, 21 study session. We have a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the required document to accept the American Rescue Plan Act, MARCA funds. And that's it. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda, affirming.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Council will now proceed to the public hearing on tonight's agenda. We'll return to the business items after the hearing. Solid Waste Rates Adoption Resolution. Public hearing on the proposed solid waste rates is called to order. Purpose of this hearing is to take public comment on the proposed solid waste rates. Does any council member wish to announce actual potential conflict interest? Seeing none, nor do I. This will be presented by our Finance Director, Bonnie Dennis. Bonnie, welcome back.
Hi, thank you, good evening. I'm Bonnie Dennis, Finance Director. I am here in basically, because this is the Finance Director, who's here on a long vacation. So the solid waste rates are being presented, were presented to you on June 15th by the consultant Chris Bell from Bell &amp; Associates. Based on that presentation, there are an overall universal price increase that will come into effect on September 1st. The increase in rates is required to be a public hearing in reference to the Oregon state statutes. And city staff does anticipate that the solid waste rates will come back during the master fee schedule. I know that was one of the key pieces that was discussed the last meeting, but that will come back, the master fee schedule during the budget process in this break. That's about all I have.
Let's see. Have you received any additional correspondence on this topic?
No, we have not.
Okay. Does anyone wish to comment on the proposed rates? Dan, anybody online?
Nobody online.
We will skip all of this. Does council have any questions? Yeah. If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Wait a second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing on the proposed solid waste rates. All those in favor?
All aye.
Opposed? None heard? Public testimony portion of the public hearing on the proposed solid waste rate is closed. This is a council discussion.
I think we had a great conversation during the presentation last time. And I think we kind of reflected that some of the questions. Which was just reminded as I was coming today about the solid waste rate. There's some improvements there, so I don't have anything to add to that conversation. And I recovered it.
Right. Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the resolution adopting solid waste service rated effective September 1st, 2021.
That, exactly how that's supposed to be. I think that's supposed to be solid waste service rates. Dan?
What's that?
Yes.
Sure?
Yes. I move to approve the resolution adopting solid waste service rates effective September 1st, 2021. Almost saved lives.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution adopting solid waste service rates effective September 1st, 2021. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. All right, council will now return to business items on the agenda. I think the next item up is the Equity Steering Committee vote adoption. It's presented by our Equity Program Manager, John Henning.
Good evening, everyone.
Mayor, councilman.
I can see your namesign right down there.
Oh!
I got you, I got you.
You're doing great.
All the things.
All the things.
Final thing.
Evening, everyone. I'm John Henning, City Equity Program Manager, with City of Milwaukee. We are here to present the draft, or actually the ordinance for the Equity Steering Committee for the city. When we last discussed this last month, there were a couple of questions about the role of the committee in terms of whether they would be doing the heavy listing and actually creating a plan for the city. Also questions about their role being advised. So there are two changes made to the ordinance to reflect the feedback from the council at that time. Those are in Section 2, 2010B and C. So those two have been changed to reflect in the advisory role, in fact, of the council. Will be, sorry, will be running vice staff into the council, but not actually doing the work product of creating a good project for the city. So this is the culmination of several months of work. We spoke first about this last fall, I believe, when the city adopted the equity priority. When I came on board in November, there was a discussion at that time. And during subsequent feedback, the decision to support creating an Equity Steering Committee. So this ordinance would create that committee. We've already done improvements for that committee. We would like to see more applicants. The committee's role for the city will be to learn more about our processes and our programs, provide feedback to us on what we're doing well and what we can do better, and to hold us accountable to our commitments. So we're looking for people who represent numerous aspects of our community. That is a difficult thing. We need a lot of people to be able to do that well, and so the more applications, the better. So I ask all of you and anyone listening to please give the word out that we are recruiting. The application deadline is September 3rd, so we have five months to go. And we'd love to see a lot of applicants. We have some wonderful people who have applied so far, we just need more of them. So that is the push right now, is to get as many applications as possible. Based on that timeline, we expect that we will begin meeting sometime in December. That's the current plan for this group, based on the amount of time it takes to get the group together and to start meeting. This group will meet both virtually and in person, as the intent, so that they can accommodate individuals with disabilities, both physical and developmental, and also individuals who may be, you know, a little bit urgent. They have difficulty coming to us in person, but the ability to do this online. That is the current plan. Of course, the committee will be working on the bylaws as soon as we start.
Is there a Facebook post or something that we could all share?
I believe there is one on the city site. If there isn't, we'll make sure there is one. It is also in the current article, actually, in July pilot, December, August, November. It is on July pilot, and we'll make sure we get something on the website. And I'll try to make it available if not available.
Great.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for all your great work on this. Exciting to be moving this to this level.
Well, I had reservations, we at least talked about this during the comprehensive plan process. And my reservations about exactly what it would create, something that wouldn't have, wouldn't be grounded in the community and grounded in expertise. And I really appreciate that we have you here and that you've put time into getting to know the community and understanding who Milwaukee is as we move forward with this work. And I do, I feel like we're in a good place now to make this be something that is actually meaningful, actually empowers our community to really take on the serious challenges that equity issues, inclusion issues, justice issues present. It's such a delicate and personal arena that it has to be done with care, I believe. Otherwise, you end up harming the very people that you intend to help and hear better. So thank you for taking this work so seriously.
Thank you so much, guys.
Yeah, and helping with the community and the process. I think that that was also part of our concern with the comp plan and that conversation. You weren't where we are today, so.
Thank you, council.
Yeah, I concur. I think the addition of the worry about the delicacy of the work, I think there was also just a worry of creating another committee that was not with a clear mandate. And I think you brought shape to that, and we don't have to worry, we don't have that worry anymore. That was, you know, sort of like a worry about wasting people's time, you know, because you didn't have a clear definition of what they were, you know, what their goal was. So I think all of that was kind of conservative, definitely gone by the wayside for me as well.
That's your thing, you guys?
All right, well, then I, there's more discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the first and second reading by title only and adoption of the ordinance and then the municipal code, Chapter 2.22, to create an Equity Steering Committee, ESC.
Very seconded. It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance and naming municipal code, Chapter 2.22, to create the Equity Steering Committee, ESC. Starting through the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously. Ms. Ova, would you please read the ordinance by title only twice?
An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code, Chapter 2.22, to create an Equity Steering Committee, ESC. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending municipal code, Chapter 2.22, to create an Equity Steering Committee, ESC.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, you please call the council.
Counselor Faulkner?
Hi.
Counselor Beatty?
Aye.
Counselor McAdenas?
Aye.
Counsel, Council President Heisey?
Aye.
Mayor Gamba?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Ordinance 2207.
Very good. Go forth and perform. Yeah, please do get us some, you know, things we can share on social media pages.
Excellent.
And also reach out beyond that. Are we, I'm trying to remember. A little bit since I read it, are we requiring that people be, the entire committee be residents?
Only one half of the committee. Only one street resident of the city, call.
Well, yeah, it says majority.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
And before we jump into the next piece, if someone is watching this on air and they're having a hard time hearing people, if you go to the YouTube channel, which there's a link at the meeting notice on our website, it's a lot clearer. So for anybody who is struggling tonight, feel free to jump onto the YouTube channel, I'm sorry, onto our link, our Zoom link that is on the council.
So to be clear, Zoom is clearer than YouTube?
Correct.
Got it.
Thank you.
Ah, okay, I was hearing a little...
No, Zoom.
Thank you.
No, that's great.
Is that going to affect our final recording? Do we need to start stepping up our volume here?
No, you're, you're just fine. It's the Zoom recording that's going to ultimately end up getting shown.
Okay, great.
Perfect.
So next item is the Milwaukee Center renaming resolution. This will be presented by our Content Natural Resources Manager.
Yeah. So I am here to present a resolution for a name change for our Milwaukee Center to become the Milwaukee Community Center. In 2019, the Milwaukee Center Community Advisory Board reached out to North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Superiority to request the name of the Milwaukee Center be changed to the Milwaukee Community Center. The Milwaukee Communities, or the Milwaukee Center Community Advisory Board felt that this better reflected the audience and residents who were served by the center and expanded it beyond the senior center that it was originally founded for, but it's now expanded into youth programming, all residents programming, education at home. In June of 2021, so just a few months ago, the Milwaukee Parks and Recreation Board were visited by members from North Clackamas Parks and Recreation on the name change process, and they voted to support the name change unanimously. And then just this last July, the MCPRD District Advisory Committee, which has recently reformed, voted to support the name change as well. And so today, we bring it to you to see if you would like to vote to approve the name change from Milwaukee Center to Milwaukee Community Center.
Very good. Questions?
I have a question about the, just the first whereas in the resolution cites that the Milwaukee Center provides essential and beneficial services to Milwaukee residents. And I just want to highlight that anyone is be able to use the Milwaukee Center. And that facility actually serves residents throughout the North Clackamas Parks District who take advantage of the programs and all the cool stuff that happens there. So that just stood out to me a little bit in the resolution language itself. I wanted to, at least if not change the language, clarify that the Milwaukee Center is in no way limited only to Milwaukee residents, but it's available to the public as a whole.
Yeah, I think we might actually want to change.
Yeah, I agree.
To sort of remove the word Milwaukee there, or say, "community residents" or something. Because there was a, there was an effort several years back to actually... because there was a, there was an effort several years back to actually take Milwaukee out of the title just because of that kind of concern, you know. So, yeah, it does serve people even beyond the.
Oh, sure.
The North Blackness Parks.
Well, it's still.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So would you recommend to change this language to beneficial services to all community members?
Community.
You should broaden to, or broaden community members, or something that really definitely makes it clear it's not just Milwaukee.
You could just say number of community.
But that can still be interpreted as, since it's the Milwaukee Community Center, members of the community can interpret it as being Milwaukee.
How about residents throughout the region?
Does that work?
Absolutely.
Excellent.
So I hope to provide essential beneficial services to residents throughout.
Thank you. Anything else? Good catch. Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the resolution changing the name of the Milwaukee Center to the Milwaukee Community Center as amended by staff.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution changing the name of the Milwaukee Center to the Milwaukee Community Center. As. What did she say?
As amended by staff.
As amended by staff. Thank you. All right.
Great.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And heard it passes the next. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Oak Lodge Water Services District check-in. And this will be presented by the district's engineer, Jason Rice, and other members of the district. Jason, for those of you that don't know, he's the arsonist. Which is why we're all going to vote against this one.
Hello, Mayor Gamba and fellow councilors. I'm Paul Vronick, the president of the Oak Lodge and Water Services Board of Directors. To my right is Mark Knutson, the board treasurer, and as introduced, Jason Rice. The Oak Lodge Board of Directors has expressed a desire to actively pursue changing the governance structure of the district to an authority. This initially had been discussed at the time of the consolidation of the water and sewer districts, but was deferred for the sake of simplicity. Since that time, we've been approached by enough community members that have asked the board to consider this change in governance. And the board has discussed it and believes that a change in governance will improve our ability to plan for our future capital improvements, protect the integrity of our existing investments, and limit the risk of losing a portion of our customer base through annexation or incorporation. If the district were to lose a portion of our customer base, then due to withdrawal and the existing bonded debt and needed improvements would be spread over fewer customers, necessitate rate increases, of course. To meet these statutory requirements of becoming an authority, we will be asking the Board of County Commissioners to start the process. But since the border of our district extends into both the corporate city limits of Milwaukee and Gladstone, the statutory process requires that the cities express their approval by resolution. An altered method would be for us to redraw our district boundaries and shrink them so that we're not overlapping into the cities, but then that would require us to redo all the intergovernmental agreements to serve the customers that we're currently serving that are within the two cities. Our master planning processes for drinking water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater services show the need for substantial investments going forward. A recent water master plan showed a need for about $31 million we spend over the next 30 years. And we're just starting the sewer master plan, and we expect recommendations for additional capital investments in that area as well. Forming an authority will provide a governance structure that aids our long-term planning, like forestalling, removal of portions of our customer base. It helps protect our investments in those systems, which ultimately benefits the entire community. We value the relationships we have with both cities, and we're establishing IGAs. The government manager does that. We've worked well together in doing that in the past. We have mutual interest in the areas near our borders where the topography kind of drives which service provider can offer the service at the least cost for both the improvements and operations. We're currently looking at an intertie between our system and Milwaukee's that'll assist in both of our resiliency by enabling transmission of water in either direction, which would be nice to have this summer. And at this time, I'd like to have Jason show some slides that will show where our district overlaps with the city of Milwaukee and the numbers of customers we have in common.
Hello, Howard.
Oh, good. So you've got it here. So please, six, eight minutes. We need to. Couple slides here. So, yeah, I just tried to do a big picture. We're talking about the southern boundary of Island Station to our district, even north of Park Avenue. For those of you that know what Park Avenue is, Park and Ride. And then the next slide kind of zooms in a little bit and shows various different customer classes that we've identified. We currently have an IGA that takes care of these customers and how we translate the money back and forth between each monthly rate. Effectively, we collect your rate, reimburse you for those customers in which you provide services to, and you do the same for us. So we don't, we don't currently need another IGA. We have it taken care of. But this kind of just shows the complexity of what's going on here, that sometimes a property may or may not be in your city limits. Sometimes it may or may not be being served by you for water or sewer, and there's combinations of all three of those. So the next slide actually just shows how many different properties we're talking about. And Peter, while he and I were going through this exercise, had a really good idea to just sort of take a step further and talk about which properties might, might develop and where their, their services would come from after that development occurred. So we've actually gone through that exercise, assuming not building any new infrastructure, where those properties would go to for their services, whether they're in your city or within our district. The IGA would take care of that. So lots of different examples. Only three properties that have yet to be served by both water and sewer. And they're in the middle. But yes, our proposal is to maintain the existing boundary in which we currently exist so that it wouldn't change any of these customer classes.
So next step would be returning to your city council next month to request adoption of a resolution supporting this. As I understand, our district council has made contact with Milwaukee City Attorney to, again, preliminary tweaking of the language for that, so I'm not sure how soon that will be ready.
They have confirmed.
Okay. They concur?
Yeah, they, they will have it ready.
We'll have it ready. Okay. Okay. So we're happy to entertain any questions you have.
Hey, I did, for, one last thought. In our preliminary conversations, I know there were a lot of questions related to, well, how would this affect the incorporation effort or potential annexation strategy? So we've had a couple of conversations with Joseph Edge and the various leaders of the Oak Lodge Governance Project and discussed that, and the feedback that we've received from them, I mean, very explicit, was we think that the district should do whatever the district believes is in the best interests of its customers. And we truly feel that that is this authority to be able to preserve the certainty of planning that we need to do to be able to go forward. It doesn't compromise the ability to form the city. And, and the governance project has been very outspoken in terms of support of the district in terms of continuing to exist as a district regardless of what happens with the incorporation in the Oak Lodge area. So I think we're actually have very compatible goals in terms of trying to achieve this and how this proposal fits into that framework in the future.
Questions?
What, I guess I'm, I'm not really very familiar with the timeline on when that project should drop up and have some sort of a recommendation, or at least we'll have a better understanding about which direction that might go.
We, they're getting a final document from, what is it, Eco Northwest they're working with?
Correct.
I think in September. They've seen a draft. And based on the drafts, they concur that this in no way hampers their ability to, to form a city or to, or any of the options actually that they're considering, so.
So, I mean, questions on the table are incorporation, annexation, do nothing.
Right.
So I suppose I would still maybe, I guess, have questions about, well, then, what if it's annexation and we put Milwaukee residents who have very different governance structure for the same services?
Right, which we already do have.
Yeah.
I think, you know, what, in practicality, it's my understanding, is let's say that we were to vote no, and we decide we're not going to do this. All it means is that Peter and these guys are going to have to jump through a bunch of hoops to change who's served by what and all these things. It's just going to cost a bunch of money. And service to those people, their lives won't look really any different. They'll still have water and sewer. It doesn't, to my understanding, really affect our bottom line or our functioning of our systems in any way. And things like the intertie are always good, right? It's always good to have redundancy. Actually, under that, I was curious, what is your source, I mean, in the town?
We draw off the Clockness River.
Okay.
Yeah, we share a treatment plant with Sunrise and Gladstone.
Okay, that's what I figured. But I didn't know. Maybe you guys have wells too?
Uh, we do now.
Okay.
And I just guess I want to make it super clear that it was, for me personally, you know, I'm very agnostic on what the Oak Grove getting laws residents decide to do and what path they take. I guess I'm, my question is just a little, a little bit more about sort of like, you know, any additional complications for, you know, any potential future residents, not suggesting in any way that I have scared that game or want to put my finger on that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I do hope they become incorporated in some manner. I think unincorporated, large, unincorporated urban areas are that idea.
I certainly share that concern. In terms of specifically their schedule, my understanding, they haven't been particularly clear because they're kind of figuring it out as they go along. And I don't, and I don't mean to be curial about it because it's a very complex process. And so the work that they're doing right now is gathering the information, particularly related to the economics. How much would it cost for the three options that you've identified? And then they've been very formidable in terms of then sharing that information with the public, having a public dialogue and input, asking questions, hopefully finding the answers to address those concerns. And then figuring out, okay, based on that, where do we go from there? And so I think they are working their way along the process, but in terms of a, they're going to have a final decision by X, I don't think that exists at this point. And so that's why we feel like, well, we need to move ahead and make this decision and then wait for the governance project to figure out what their ultimate outcome is going to be.
Thank you. And I'll just add that the mayor and I had the opportunity to meet these folks and with, as you passed earlier, Public Works Director. And I really appreciated that you all reached out and that we had that broader conversation. And it felt really good to meet. It still feels really good to meet. I feel like you are acting in the best interests of your customers. And I think at that time in that meeting, I said the best, the best outcome is one where nobody notices anything has happened. You know, you don't want people noticing their, their water services. Generally, that's a bad thing. And I do feel like that's clearly what you are endeavoring to do here and that you've had really positive and clear communication with our Public Works folks. So, so thank you for that transparency and openness. And, yeah, I would support moving forward.
Any questions?
I guess my only other question would just be to get a head nod from Peter that he still thinks it's fine and good.
Makes sense. I think, yeah.
Well, thank you. Knock out a resolution and be back before you in the morning.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, you guys. Thank you.
See you.
All right, our next item in discussion is municipal broadband. And this will be presented by Information Technology Manager, Armin Gil.
Good evening. Oh, I need to talk about our, I'm used to hearing you. I see that one's. Good evening. So I'm here to talk about municipal broadband. It's been something that's been kind of hanging out there for a while. And quite honestly, it's kind of a scary topic for an IT person because it's not something that we normally do. So I reached out to Hillsborough and Sherwood, who have been putting municipal broadband out to their residents quite successfully. And I asked them, you know, is there a paint-by-numbers that we can follow? And they said, not really, but we have a great person to talk to, and that's John Honker. He is with Magellan, I'm not sure what, Magellan, something, it starts with.
Advisors.
Advisors, yes. And I have him here, the voice.
Almost, almost here.
So John is helping out Sherwood and Hillsborough, like I said, and subject matter expert to go ahead and do a presentation for you and then answer any questions that you may have. And then we'll, we'll move on from there.
Great. Thanks. Go on.
Great. Well, thank you all. Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. Pleasure to present tonight to, to leadership in Milwaukee. My name is John Honker. I am actually one of the founders of Magellan. We've been around for about 17 years now, helping cities across the country figure out the broadband issues that they have and, and find fixes for them, find resolutions for them. We work across the US and of course most closely with your neighbors, Sherwood and Hillsborough, as they are both deploying their fiber optic networks to provide internet services to their communities. We've been working with Hillsborough for about four years, helping them design and build the network. So we have local staff in, in Hillsborough who are on site every day. With the fiber construction contractors, we really are the city's owner's rep, right, for the city. We're helping manage and protect the city's best interests as the network's being built and making sure that the residents are getting services on time and on par and on delivery. They're getting the best services they can. We're doing the same with Sherwood, and Sherwood is just going into construction of its network here in the, in the next few months. So, so we do, we work heavily across the US. This is a very big topic, and it's a very important topic, as you all have seen. If we want to move on to the next slide, bring. Co, you know, we all know that internet service is important in our community, but COVID really became the catalyst that almost was a wake-up call. And it was a wake-up call for so many cities across the US that realized some of their customers or some of their citizens and businesses didn't have adequate access to internet and didn't have equitable access to internet as well. And that became, you know, that's become a major issue, a major charge. As you have probably heard, you know, there's over $65 billion of federal funding that's been allocated toward broadband in the CARES Act and the. been allocated toward broadband in the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, which is being funded across the US and being used for broadband. So, you know, what we've seen as a result of this, and you've probably heard this in your community as well, is, you know, as, as people were driven home and to shelter in place and to work from home and live and thrive from home, you know, internet networks were taxed and internet service providers didn't always stand up to challenge of meeting their customers' demands. And we found that, you know, there were significant issues in terms of working from home and the economic development cost of that, right, in terms of both keeping home-based businesses thriving and alive on the internet and also allowing remote workers to be able to do their jobs. We saw major issues across the US with education and virtual learning, right? Work from, learn from home environments, saw so many school systems struggle and with that came, you know, students who are falling further and further behind the curve. And this was a really significant equity issue we saw in many communities where, you know, those who had sufficient broadband, had high-speed internet that was very reliable and affordable, you know, would do well, whereas those who didn't fell behind and didn't have that access. So digital equity, digital inclusion is just becoming a very, very big topic and very important to the, you know, our students, our kids, our work. Healthcare and telemedicine, another major impact from COVID, being able to have those virtual doctors' visits and be able to actually, you know, televisit with them. Public safety and first responders, having internet access to be able to manage the pandemic as a public institution. And then, like I said before, digital equity and digital literacy, making sure that, you know, through COVID that, you know, internet access was available and for those that had it, it was, you know, it was their lifeline to the rest of the world. Next slide, please. So, so really the problem is, is we see it and what's important for you to think about as we, as you start to, to consider broadband and the role possibly that the city of Milwaukee should play in broadband, think about some of these questions, right? Do residents and businesses have equal access to high-speed internet? And when you think about that or you want to know, understand where they're, how they're distributed throughout Milwaukee and also that your mileage may vary depending on where you live. And we've seen this in many communities, we saw this in Hillsborough, we also see in Sherwood, depending on where you are, there's different, not necessarily different types of service, but depending on how far you are away from a provider's network or a provider's central office, your, your services may be faster or slower, right? If you're at the end of the block versus the beginning of the block closer to the, to that network access point, you may not have as, as reliable or as fast a service. The second thing that you should be thinking about is do residents and businesses have choice, right? Does more than one option exist for them in terms of high-speed networks, right, in terms of high-speed internet? In some cases, only one provider is available and we see this in most communities around Portland where there's a, you know, obviously a dominant cable provider and then a traditional telephone company that's offering DSL. But are those services on par and can you get both of those services at high speeds in, to each household in each community? And finally, are prices affordable given the limited providers that are in the environment? When consumers have alternatives, providers have to compete on price. And this is one of the big things that, that you want to really think about when you're considering high-speed internet and the needs of the community. Is there, is there competition in Milwaukee so that prices are affordable and people are getting what they pay for? We've seen this already starting to happen in Hillsborough where because of the city's service, you know, the other providers are jockeying and maneuvering to reduce their prices to be more competitive with Hillsborough's pricing. So when we think about some of these issues, you know, these are really core to the overall policy framework for broadband in a, in a community like Milwaukee. And then from this, as we start to think about these, these issues, we want to advise you on what other communities are doing throughout the US. Next slide, please. So why do cities provide all internet, right? Because there are a number of them that are, as you probably know, Sherwood and Hillsborough are both providing, are both ISPs, meaning they're both providing certain internet service directly to their homes and businesses across the city. It's really about digital equity for residents and businesses, which means access and affordability, meaning equitable access to any home or business across the city and affordable access at the same rate. Economic development, retention of existing jobs and attracting new jobs. Low-cost internet for economically challenged and vulnerable populations. And we see this as a major push in terms of affordability to ensure that the, you know, disadvantaged citizens are, have a lifeline type of an internet access at a very low cost to, to allow them to, you know, have those capabilities and thrive in the digital world. Cities also like to improve connectivity to schools, hospitals, libraries, you know, the utilities and other public organizations. So as, for example, in Hillsborough, part of Hillsborough's highlight internet service offering, the city actually built a, a fiber network to connect all 34 Hillsborough City schools and they all now have 10 gigabit connectivity, very, very high-speed connectivity. And it was part of their total strategy to build a digital highway to not only connect our residents and businesses, but also the community anchor organizations that exist across the city. This is another important aspect of it as you're thinking about internet and thinking about fiber in general. Fiber has a great ability to support reliability and new capabilities for electric distribution. And we work with a lot of electric utilities across the US and, you know, they're really investing in fiber networks to expand their distribution automation and their smart grid programs and support reliability and reducing cost. And then also just generally supporting future needs as they emerge because as cities build fiber networks, they find new purposes for them every day. One of our customers in California, the city of Palo Alto, has, has built, built a network like this 25 years ago and only for the purpose of connecting some facilities together. Today, that network connects over 250 businesses, connects all of the schools, the library, all of the, basically all of the community anchors and generates about $4 million a year for the city. So when you think about fiber optics in general and fiber, think about it as core infrastructure, like your roads, your water, your sewer, your electric system, it's an asset that you're going to be, you're going to potentially be using for long-term value and, and long-term revenue generation for this. Next slide, please. So who else is building and who else is in broadband in terms of municipal governments? Around 400 cities and counties nationwide, this map gives you a kind of a clustering effect of all the cities that are out there today that provide some kind of broadband service to their communities. And they do this in a couple of different ways. You can see in the Pacific Northwest, Northern Oregon, Washington, even Northern California, there's a great concentration of networks and those are generally between the cities, the public utility districts and a number of counties in, in the Pacific Northwest states. If we move on to the next slide, this is important for you to think about, just at a very high level, this is also a very big topic, you know, how would the city even consider, what role would the city play in the broadband arena? In, in that map, 63 cities are the actual ISP like Hillsborough and Sherwood. In another 286 cities, the city is providing what we call wholesale or just dark fiber, meaning that they're leasing the infrastructure. They, they own it, they own fiber and the actual network that connects residents and businesses, but they're, they're not providing the service. In that case, they're shifting those responsibilities to another provider or a partner who can, can provide those cities, provide internet to those customers. And in 71 cities, an actual partner is the ISP, you know, partner has come in either and co-invested with the city or is using the city's fiber infrastructure to provide services to them and to the system. So these are just a couple of ways that the city, that cities are, play a role in broadband and I'll just now talk a couple of minutes about the two that are closest to you. Hillsborough with highlight, the city's providing high-speed internet and digital voice to their, their customer base. The network is live, it's active. We started designing it about two years ago, just about nine months to do all the engineering and, and then go into construction of the first phases of the network, which are predominantly in the South Hillsborough area and around Davis Road. The city provides a service, provides customer service, sales, marketing, really all functions to deliver high-speed internet to their residents and businesses. Moving on to the next slide, Sherwood does the same. Sherwood has been in the business for a long, a longer time, about seven years, but only to a smaller portion of the city. Now they're actually accelerating that timeframe and are looking to build out citywide and will be going into construction in the next probably 60 to 90 days for the, the first phase of homes and businesses in the city. Like Hillsborough, Sherwood also provides high-speed internet. They provide 1 gigabit, customer service, local support. They have internal staff that's actually managing that, has been managing that and then will grow that staff over time as they get more customers and, and after all. Next slide, please. Others in the, so actually we can, we can go to the next slide. So it's really a high level of kind of framing out what you should be thinking about as leadership in terms of high-speed internet, how your community is served and, you know, some potential strategies that the city could utilize to resolve or mitigate issues if they're found. So the first and most important thing for you to do is really understand the facts, right, as you're starting to approach broadband, broadband as a policy issue. And, and part of our next steps would be to really conduct what we call a feasibility study for you. And that feasibility study is going to, would answer a number of questions around high-speed internet in Milwaukee. And it's really, the goal of it is to present the facts as they are. The facts of, and, and the facts will be garnered through answering a number of questions. One, what's the current state of broadband in Milwaukee? What residents and businesses have? Are those services sufficient? Are providers making investments in the community? And are the services up to par with your peer communities also, right? Meaning how is Milwaukee doing compared to some of its peers in the Portland area? How's it, what role could the city play in broadband, right? As we first understand what the current state of broadband is in Milwaukee and if we identify gaps and issues, then we look at what role the city could play in terms of, you know, could active investment? Could the city make active investments in broadband similar to what Sherwood and Hillsborough are doing? What would the costs of those investments be? Are there ways to reduce those costs? You know, one of the key aspects that's different in Milwaukee is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you, you have your own electric utility, I believe, and that would significantly improve.
No, we don't. We do not have our own electric.
You don't, you don't have, okay, you don't have your own electric.
Thank you, of course, girl.
Okay, so then you would, you'd be on par as we look at really sort of the, the ways to reduce costs, any existing infrastructure that you have, any existing fiber or other capital projects that may allow for similar fiber construction, give you ways to reduce costs. Also, as we look at the opportunities, one of the key things that you'll want to understand is how many citizens and businesses would actually subscribe to services if, if Milwaukee were to provide an internet service. And then finally, what are the benefits and risks, right? This is probably the most important as you, as you consider what the role of Milwaukee is in the broadband arena, you know, you want to look at what the benefits are to the community. You know, how are the residents empowered? How are your businesses and that home development empowered? Look at, we want to look at all of those different community functions that you support and how broadband really becomes a, a, a platform to help them thrive and also, you know. Conversely, we also have to look at the risks, right? What, you know, the, these are, you know, network, networks are expensive, right? And they're, the costs of infrastructure are high, you know, to derive those benefits. So we need to really look at the risks because as, you know, Hillsborough and Sherwood go into, into the business, they have to compete with providers and other cities that are also in the business have to compete with those providers as well. And you want to understand what the risks and doing that are, right? How would you, and how you would potentially overcome them. So the back half of the study will really look at financial analysis in terms of the costs, a number of different business models that the city could implement, both business models where the city is actively providing service and business models where the city is more of just a passive owner of infrastructure. But we always use roads as a good example, right? Meaning that the city builds the roads, but, and commerce happens on the roads, but the city doesn't drive the cars and the city doesn't make the commerce happen, it's just an innuendo. So when we think about the business models, there'll be those active models with cities, the ISP, which gives you, you know, the most reward, the most control, but also has risk, more risk associated with it versus those more passive models that may allow the city to divert some of that risk. Although by doing that and potentially having another provider deliver those services to residents, you're also taking away some control. So there's a, there's a delicate balance between risk, reward and control as you consider these different options in how you, how you want to, what role you want to play in broadband. So these are really kind of the, the essential questions that we want to help you answer in this study. And again, it's a large, this is a significant topic and I want to kind of keep this presentation short, but I would, I would love to take some Q and A if, if any, a mayor or a member of council has any, any questions for us.
I definitely do. I have a few. I was a little surprised by your slide that showed how few of them actually operate their own ISP and that the bigger majority are the sort of wholesale providers. Are they providing to existing, you know, typical ISP, you know, typical providers like cable companies and phone companies or are they're using some non-for, not-for-profit models? Are they typically providing to for-profit providers?
It's, it's actually, that's a great question, thank you, and it's a combination. So, you know, in, in those 71 instances where a city is providing service, there's actually more because in some cases there's a city and there's a nonprofit subsidiary or there's a nonprofit community organization that's actually delivering the service so the city doesn't have to, right? And in some cases, in some states, you know, Oregon's different, of course, right, where the city can provide services, but in some states, they have to do it that way because the city itself, the municipal corporation, isn't allowed to provide service, so they do it through a third party. So the, the numbers aren't quite as black and white as, as that slide showed, there's probably closer to 150 where the cities, if we include the nonprofits, it's probably about 150 total where the cities providing service.
It's been a while since I looked at Sandy, Oregon's page, but as I recall, they were providing the service for $40 to $50 a month?
$59 per gigabit and $29 per 100 megabit.
Is that what it is? Okay. And is that...
That's pretty competitive. That's pretty competitive, very competitive.
Is that similar to what's coming out in Hillsborough and Sherwood, or are those coming in more expensive?
Hillsborough's a little more expensive, but they do have a low-income option that's significantly lower than that. But I don't remember the price. Do you, do you remember the low-income price in Hillsborough? John?
Um, I, councillor, I believe it's nineteen or twenty-nine. I know that Hillsborough, they were working on the pricing recently, so don't, please don't quote me on that. I don't know if that was set in stone, but that's kind of what I recall. I mean, another good example, we see a lot of cities who are providing service, good example is like Longmont, Colorado, who's one of the kind of the premier providers in the, in the state. They, they offer a one-gigabit service for fifty dollars a month, lifetime membership. And they actually started with that because they wanted to get as many people to sign up as possible and really get a head start. And now they have almost fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent of the population subscribes to the service, and then they also have a low-income option, which is, I think, nineteen ninety-nine for the, for the service. So they took a very, you know, if you reduce the prices, you're going to get more subscribers. They took that approach and were able to get the volume, and they provide to about forty, thirty-five to forty thousand homes across that community in Colorado, which is just a little bit north of Denver, about an hour and a half.
So I'm paying, I believe, fifty dollars a month right now for fiber. And we're talking about a whole lot of work for what effectively amounts to possibly a thirty-dollar savings per month for our lower-income residents. If we want to save people thirty bucks a month, I hope we think about all of the different ways we could do that rather than focusing on broadband. And I will absolutely, there are also benefits to small businesses. I don't mean to discredit that anyway. But I'm hoping that in this study, we will have some data that tells us about who in Milwaukee has a decent internet connection right now and who doesn't. Who doesn't because they can't afford it and how much cheaper it might be for them. And then I hope we also have some sort of assessment of how much time and effort it will take the city of Milwaukee to take on an entire new service equivalent to roads or water or other infrastructure. I also have questions, at one point you mentioned revenue generation. Our roads do not generate revenue for us. Our water system does not generate revenue for us. We rely on those systems to be self-serving. So whatever we have around broadband has to be able to pay for itself. That's how government works. It's not a, they'll make money off of it.
No, but what we see in most communities is there's, in the communities that are providing services themselves, they're generating excess revenues, so they're utilizing those either as a general fund contribution or they're operating as an enterprise fund and they're reinvesting those revenues back into expansion of the network or to reduce rates, right? Because in some cases, they'll say, well, if we have excess money in the system at the end of the, in the fund balance at the end of the year, that should go back to the subscribers, right? Because it should be a zero, it should pay for itself, but it shouldn't be a revenue generator. So, you know, municipalities use different ways to treat those revenues, whether they reinvest, whether they make contributions to the general fund, special projects. We have some municipal clients that will put those into the special projects reserve and use those for, you know, new construction facilities or provide rebates on broadband fees.
What I'm saying is I hope that we get some very good information out of this study that will help answer those questions that I raised about who's benefiting, how this is working, all of that. And glad to hear that it could be a mechanism for subsidizing lower-income customers. That would be an important feature to know. Just this feedback to you, Brandon, and I know I'm probably asking for the moon because that's what we do. But that is part of what I hope to have as an understanding of what it would really mean to provide broadband services in Milwaukee. I do want, if this is something we undertake, it to be something that provides a significant benefit for people in need and small businesses that are...
Well, and I think it's not just small businesses. It's businesses, it's called for in our North Milwaukee Innovation Area to increase the bandwidth, you know, to create a fiber network to support large businesses as well. And I'll have to find out where you're getting your service because I'm, I'm paying a hundred and ten dollars a month for broadband plus voice. So the, so I look at Hillsborough's rates online, they're saying fifty-five, and I don't have a gig, I definitely do not have a gig to my house. They have fifty-five dollars for one gig service, plus twenty dollars for voice means seventy-five dollars. That's about, you know, thirty, forty percent reduction over what I'm paying for less service.
So for those of you who don't know, Nisa and I are neighbors. We live about two blocks away, and I have a correction from my significant mother that we're actually paying sixty-five dollars a month for fiber, but that is what they're paying.
I pay sixty-five for a gig, for a gig service also. So I think that that'll be really interesting though to learn from the study is, is what are the options available to Milwaukeeans? I'm interested in whether or not there are, you know, and we do low-income, you know, pricing for all the services that we provide through the city, and at this point, you know, if we never did this, I'm sure we would do it that as well. I guess, I'm curious if there are even more creative pricing models that other cities might be using that are sort of sliding scale, you know, both in the residential and the commercial arena. Is that anything that anybody's doing, or is it just sort of like, here's the rate and then there's this discounted rate?
Um, you know, I think there, a lot of the cities will rebate those depending on the level of income. So, you know, one good parameter that cities use is the Free and Abbot Bruce School Lunch Program and the length of time that customers have been in that program. So, you know, for longstanding customers, those rebates grow, or in some cases, they may be at free service, right? If it's a longstanding customer where it's a, 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 sort of a year after year participation in the program, and the city has to work with the school district for that, but it's, it's great data because, you know, everyone uses that as a baseline to judge incomes and disadvantaged residents. So those discounts could become progressive all the way to zero for the most disadvantaged.
There's any questions or thoughts? I have to say that I've been advocating for this since before I was the mayor. I was privy to Sandy's process as that was going on and really impressed by what they pulled up. I know it's different, they didn't have high-speed internet in Sandy, period. But, you know, as we all learned the hard way this last year, the internet is virtually as important to people's lives as electricity. And there are lots of folks that can't afford what the, what the internet providers are currently charging. And so we do have a dark fiber system that runs throughout Milwaukee. And so if we can create a service that gets our residents better service for less money, I'm all for it.
And it doesn't necessarily mean the city's the provider. I think that's an important thing to keep in mind.
It doesn't.
There are nonprofit models to look at.
Yep.
And I also just wanted to add, we are using EPFunds in order to pay for this study. We do not actually have the resources after the study for the implementation, but we are trying to make sure that we at least have the information we need in order to start making future decisions as a city.
I mean, it sounds like we've got some, a lot of really great ideas and questions in particular, and I think that we'd better get that list to you sooner rather than later so that we're not sitting here dissecting the study with all the emotions we wish had been answered.
And then, John, how long does a study usually take?
Typically, these studies are five to six months. We would anticipate, based on the current schedule, around the end of the year would be about the timing for completion of your study, we, you know, given the size of Milwaukee and just our familiarity with the area as we look at costing and, you know, construction costs and things like that, we think it'll be completed by the end of the year.
In the report, the staff report, you called out, Brandon, that another option for the city to consider is a community outreach effort through a survey to determine how residents would consider and/or take advantage of a broadband service, and that that would both increase the cost and increase the amount of time to complete the survey. So I just wanted to see if we could have a little discussion about whether or not that was something that we wanted to ask of our staff.
Hi, John, I was going to ask that if you did it.
Sorry.
I do, that's okay. I do, more information is better, in my opinion, and the feasibility of this is going to be very dependent on how interested the folks that are in Milwaukee are in having the service. So although the timeline is a drag, I think more information we have better.
If we add something like that, is, will we still be able to meet federal requirements for the expenditure of urban dollars?
Yeah, we've got, aren't we due to do, do to perform our community survey? We do that every two years.
We are, it's in December, January. It's good, yeah, it'll be December, January.
So you're suggesting maybe that's true without having to do a separate survey?
Right, we, I mean, we could add some questions to the community survey. I thought we conducted it in October, November, and then we get the report December, January.
So with Kelly not being here, I am not allowed to actually add anything. I tried doing that today to the survey, but I'm happy to take this back and book it with Brandon, and it might just be a way to supplement. We're already paying someone to do that, a presentative sampling.
I will say, it's not, it's certainly not an official survey, but I see, it's one of the things I most commonly see complaints about on nextdoor.com is the lack of, and the quality of internet service providers available in this area. It's a very common complaint. So I'm optimistic that we'll, we'll see people who are interested.
Mine too.
John, did you have any comments on the, the survey portion?
Um, Brandon, no, I think, I think the survey would, would be valuable for, I mean, it's always valuable, right? Because at the end of the day, you know, leadership should understand what the citizens and businesses have to say about broadband and not only understand it, but also get a good quantitative sampling and get statistically valid information that you can make the decisions on from the residents. And I think that, you know, in Milwaukee where you have some fiber already and you have some competition, it would be very helpful to understand what the residents are thinking and what their preferences are because it's not all always about speed, right? And sometimes it's about reliability, sometimes it's about customer service, and you really want to understand what the complaints says, as, as council member had mentioned, what kind of complaints people really have in Milwaukee, and that gives you the facts and how then to resolve those problems. And if, if there's a feasible path forward, and if so, what, what is that feasible path? So I think the voice of the community would be very valuable, and if you can integrate it into the community survey, seems like a great opportunity to do that. I, one question we would ask would just be, you know, how much content could go into that survey if it's adding into the existing survey, right?
Right. That is the problem.
Yeah.
Well, and I would, I would ask if we are going to do a, a community survey, and it sounds like we are leaning toward that, that we really do try and collect some information about who's being impacted by what and how specifically with regard to equity concerns around income levels and what people are paying, what they can afford to pay, those sorts of issues that I already covered in my earlier remarks. Because I think this is an opportunity for us to get a better understanding of that, and I would really appreciate that.
All right. So I guess I'm looking for a recommendation, and from what I hear, is the feasibility study with the survey to go along with it. All right, that's perfect. It'll take about, how long does the survey, it's about a year, or a strike year, you're saying, John, would be, if we do the feasibility study and the survey?
Oh, I, I think we can get it done in maybe just a little bit more time. I mean, because we can, we can do the survey, we can have parallel tasks, the survey with the rest of the feasibility study going on at the same time, the costing, the design, you know, the benefits, all of that. So I think, you know, we may push into six to seven months, from five to six, but I don't see a major extension if we add the survey. And let, I, I don't know what the timeframe was for the, the community survey though, if it was going out December, you know, we would be contingent on that timeframe. If we did a separate survey, we could keep it to sort of six to seven months. So we'll just follow your guidance on which you, you guys think would be best.
Well, and I will say that I think that in the community survey, we won't get the depth of information I would want us to get, so I actually would think we're having to be a standalone.
Yeah, it sounds like the community survey would suffer.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur.
Yeah, you really want to have good statistical information, and our, our surveys are generally about twenty-five questions or so, and, you know, they're staged to really give you a solid understanding of, of demand in the community, resident needs, and also something that's bulletproof so that, you know, there's very, you know, if you only have a few questions, there could be a lot of rocks thrown at that survey and a lot of attacks and, you know, to try to discredit it. We really just try hard, you know, our surveys not to let that happen, right? Very statistically valid, removing bias, asking the right questions, setting up the questions correctly, so we think that's going to give you the best, the best results and ones that you can stand behind in the study.
Would you like to see the survey before it's sent out, or do you just want to see the results of the survey?
Can you bring it back to us, I was just going to think about it.
I actually, I also think it could lead to the questions being biased, and so I would rather actually have it done.
We don't do this professionally.
No.
I really don't.
Yeah.
But I do want to make sure that we see, you know, a little bit more of the data, the underlying data. I think sometimes we kind of see a little bit of too, too big a picture and not enough.
Yeah, it'd be great to see more granular results.
Yeah, we can do the process.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you, that was greatly efficient, and we look forward to seeing the results of both the study and the survey.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you, thank you, Mayor and Council, thank you, Brandon.
And Mayor, before we go into our next topic, I did actually want to make an introduction because I didn't know if we have that in the audience. So Michael will come up. Michael is, Michael Bork is the Mayor of Cademan Security.
Oh.
This is his third day.
Third day, yes.
Something, welcome.
Yeah, and I just wanted to come and observe and see how things function. Thank you for the great bumps at the beginning of the meeting, I appreciate it.
Sure.
And, yeah, just wanted to be able to put faces to names and see what you guys do, so thank you, thank you for, thank you for sitting here and doing what you appreciate.
Thank you. Sure. Okay, we're going to take a quick five-minute break, and then we'll be back with the council board discussion. All right, we are back on air and our next and I believe last topic is a continuation of goal setting with the council. I want to give a little bit of introduction to folks that are watching and and maybe a, a little more nuanced explanation of the process. The Milwaukee City Council sets typically three goals, which are things that we have extra funding and put extra work towards. And the goal of the goals is to put in place the process generally, unless it's a one-off thing that we can do quickly, to put in place a process that becomes self-funding and then that work just continues. The perfect example of that is our SAVE program that is ongoing. We are continuing to build sidewalks and bike paths and save crossings and all those things. And we'll be doing that over the next probably nine years. And it is no longer a council goal, but that work continues. It doesn't stop just because it stopped being a council goal. The intent of the goals is to get the process going and either complete it or to set in motion a self-funding process that will continue that work. That said, when we spoke about no longer having housing be a goal, the only thought there is that some folks feel like we have some self-funding for that and that can continue. We have several processes in motion that will continue over the next several years. It in no way, shape or form indicated that we were going to be removing any affordable housing from anywhere. We are in the process of, of creating a great deal of affordable housing and over the next several years we will see at least 500 new units of affordable housing. So this, this conversation was never about removing any affordable housing nor stopping the construction of future affordable housing. I just want everybody to be super clear on that because we got some emails that were really disturbing. All right. So the question then at hand is what are going to be our three goals going forward? In the last session, we established them because we have just really embarked on our equity and justice goal that, that we are going to continue with that until, again, it is a self-sustaining process that is completely baked into the city, that everything we do will be done through that lens and through that effort. We also continued with the climate goal and said that over the next two years, we would endeavor to find a funding mechanism so that work can continue unabated going forward in the future because clearly we're not going to be done solving the climate crisis in two years. So we will need people, not only in our city, but everywhere to be working on stopping climate change. So that's our intent on climate is to continue the work we're doing, forward it and figure out a way to create a self-funding mechanism so that that work just continues on in the future, becomes a department in the city, just like the police, just like the library, just like public works. So the question that's on the table tonight is do we keep housing as a goal to further even more work that is already going to be occurring? Or do we look at another goal? And I think the goal that, the secondary goal that we were considering is parks. And I will explain that a little bit. We are in a process of trying to get the Milwaukee Bay Park built. We have been working on this for 25 years, I think, and the city itself has invested well north of $4 million in the process. We have gotten grants, we've done construction, we've done work out there and our Parks District stated intent was to finish the park, which is now, the current design is something like 9.6 million dollars. It was their intent to get that finished in the next few years. So that's one piece that's on the table and they're getting the leadership, not the staff at NCPRD. The County Board of Commissioners is getting a little squirrely about that project.
Which you can read about in the climate review, two, two articles for something.
Yep. So that's one little piece of it. Another piece of it is during the, the last year, there was federal money that came down to the state that was then divided out to the various state senators and representatives to utilize in their districts. Both our state senator Kathleen Taylor and our state representative Karen Power have committed funds. I think we're at 2.5 million?
2.25.
2.25 million dollars that are predominantly going to the build out of three of our neighborhood parks, land that the city purchased quite some time ago and that are basically lawns at this point where the trees. So the interest is in getting those parts built out and then the question of how those will then be maintained because whether or not NCPRD will be willing to maintain them. So parks has become an issue that we are going to have to address more robustly than we have been in recent years and that is why it's risen to the level of question as to whether that should be a council goal.
I think the only thing I would add maybe to that explanation, just going, you know, back to sort of generally goals, what we, you know, we discussed last time is that, you know, they're not necessarily, you know, things that we, you know, establish a funding source that makes them sustainable. It's, there also can be policy driven.
Sure.
And so writing policy, increasing environment and which, you know, other things that can happen.
Right, right. And housing is a, is a.
Very good example.
Very good example of that because there are, while we are not a housing service provider, we do have a number of levers we can pull to affect how housing service providers that provide low-income housing and commercial developers engage with the city and, and perhaps we can affect the affordability of even commercial housing by changes in our policies. So that's, that's really what's on the table is, is are there more things that we need to do in the policy realm to ensure that we have pulled every lever we can pull to make sure that we have as much affordable housing in a variety of spectrums, but the hardest one, of course, is, is the lowest income folks, housing that they can afford, given that wages have not remotely kept up with the cost of housing. I don't know if any of you caught it, but two weeks ago, I think it was, Street Roots actually did a great article again on the cost of housing and its increase and the relative wages. And in the Portland metro region in particular, housing has, you know, rents in particular have gone up substantially faster, double what, what incomes have gone up in those ranges, those price ranges. So it is not a problem that's even remotely solved and nor will we be able to utterly solve it, but we can certainly make the difference. We can make it easier and less expensive to develop housing here in Milwaukee. So if that is the table properly set?
Well, I would just add, I mean, I think that's sort of where we ended last time. I would just add that I still feel that Kellogg Dam removal is, is something we should be thinking about and that we are at a juncture where we're not going to be ready. We're gonna, there's gonna be federal funding and we're not gonna be ready. And I think that would be a real tragedy. But I won't belabor that point because I did not convince enough people, but I think, I think it's gonna, I will have a I told you so moment at some point, I'm afraid.
I think that we have demonstrated that, that all of us think that Kellogg Dam should be removed and that we support those efforts that, that now, when, when we talked about this when I was first on council, the question was who should be the champion of that goal? And we immediately identified someone else and Nicky Wick has really done, and I'm not.
I don't remember that conversation at all.
That we, that I, well, then we'll have to look at the record because I remember specifically saying like, who should be the champion of this and are we in the best position or is someone else in the best position? And we determined at that time that we were not in the best position to be the champion of that.
Absolutely no recollection of a conversation like that. I do think Nicky Wick luckily has a director the last couple of years who has the capacity to have really moved that ball, not something that the organization had more, more than two years ago. But there, and on advocacy and on, you know, the political stuff, they can be a big player, but we need an engineer at the table. We need a, somebody who will run, you know, we will have to run, as Kelly said last time. If, if there's a, you know, if there's an RFP to redo the lake bed, that will be on us because we're the property owner. So there are all these pieces that, I don't know that it needs a full-time job. I'm not saying it needs a full-time staffer the way we have for climate and the way we have for equity, but it needs more staff time than we've been giving it and that Kelly has been willing to give it. And I think it takes an engineer in particular. I think Neil laid out some of those needs in his letter to us.
What was the, what was the dollar figure that we, that we contributed to the, to the?
25,000?
25,000.
So like.
Yeah, that's the study that's, and it, and that was a good catalyst. I mean, that got, helped him get the rest of the money. That was a very, that was a great step, but that's just one tiny piece of.
I just have to point out that when we speculate on what staff time is required, we are not the experts in the room. And I have consistently, and I have spoken with staff about this numerous times, heard that it is going to take a lot of time and effort, dedicated time and effort from staff. So I appreciate the, the hope that it would just be an engineer's time some of the time, but, but that is, I think it is unrealistic. And what I'm hearing from staff is that we have serious capacity issues. I appreciate that this is important. I hope that we see some federal dollars come our way. The federal infrastructure package ended up even smaller than we were initially thinking it might be when we were talking about it at JACT a few months ago. We were told to prepare for an $800 million package as the small version. Now we're down to 500 and change, which sounds like a lot of money, but in terms of what we need in terms of infrastructure in this country, it is almost insulting. So I, and I wish, I wish I had something different this year. I wish we had a different outcome on that, but it did not make me feel terribly optimistic about federal dollars coming to rectify the very expensive mess that is the Kellogg. And I absolutely appreciate that we have so much dedicated advocacy of Nicky Wick. They're doing tremendous work. I can't thank Neil enough for his persistence. If anyone can turn the tides on this thing, I think he's the one. So and I, you know, I hope I'm wrong. I want to be proven wrong, but right now I, I do not look at our federal dollars and feel like we are set up to be in, in a missed opportunity here. I feel like we're seeing that the money is not there. And I know this is important to the community. I don't mean to diminish that at all, but I don't think there is a realistic understanding of how big the scope of work is on that project.
And that we are not the primary player.
Well, we have always been. We, the, the city led a process in 2011.
No, I'm sorry. Ownership's take. We don't, the ODOT is in such a, is such a huge role. So is ODUF Dennis. So are, so are federal partners. We are not the driver of removing Kellogg Dam. We can, we can, we could literally rewrite our entire budget and dedicate every single dollar of the city's budget to nothing but Kellogg Dam and we still would be one seat at a huge table. That is my biggest concern with this project and always has been. It's not because I don't want to see that dam gone. It's because we are, we are one seat table, even if we put 10 people at that seat.
Well, I mean, ODOT, there's no, there's no, you will hear no comma, no, no dissent from me that ODOT has to, you know, is, is the linchpin, getting ODOT to move is the linchpin. But once that, I mean, the other people at the table are secondary. We are the second most important player at that table. We are the second.
Cora will have a lot to say, but yes, and, and, and again, like has sort of been said, if I saw any potential whatsoever for getting 22 million dollars, we'd be having a different conversation. I just, I don't.
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, the, the current pack, I mean, the new package does not look promising, but that also doesn't sound like it's the last.
Hopefully, hopefully.
I think, you know, we will see more over the coming year.
And I think, you know, we will all be watching and we'll all be working with our federal delegations. This not being a council goal doesn't take it away from things that we're trying to do as a council.
No, it just takes us.
Conversation is putting. I think if it, if there becomes a situation, I mean, what Neil's doing should get us enough of a study that should money become available, it can look like a shovel-ready project pretty darn fast. A little bit of that's dependent on ODOT. So more to come. There's a new ODOT director. I was hoping to meet him at the OMA conference because we usually have a directors. We have all the directors there. They didn't do that this year. They're coming to LSC instead. So I will absolutely have a conversation with him about that and Monroe and a few other things that we're involved with ODOT. And just to put it on his radar because he is, I want to make sure that, that he is aware of it and how important it is to us. So it by no means takes it off the table to work that I'm going to be doing forward. And if, if we see any inkling that 22 million dollars can be had, then it's a whole new conversation.
And there's something I, I feel like we haven't been saying in our discussion of why parks needs to be the goal. And that is that when we solicited those funds, those federal dollars from Senator Taylor and Representative Power, we're very generous and really fought for those monies to come to our community. Our commitment to them was that we would provide the staff time to manage that process. That means that the money that we are getting, the federal money, is not paying for the staff time that takes to manage the process of building those three parks. That is a lot of work. We don't have a way to pay for that work. We don't make this work. And we could delay setting parks as a goal by six months, maybe a year, and still manage to pull it off. But we do not have another way to pay for the staffing we require to build out those three parks. I'll also add that, that question that the mayor also already brought up about ongoing maintenance for our parks. We have an already overburdened system. This is one of the lowest funded, if not the lowest funded, correct me if you might remember.
As far as I know, it's the lowest funded parks district in the state of Oregon.
All right. So they're dirt poor. We keep asking more and more of them by adding more parks and they, to their credit, try their hardest to deliver, but we are up against a funding crisis and it's gonna take some time from staff to figure out a way to pay for the maintenance of those new parks and that will require staff time. of those new parks, and that will require staff time to do some research and education, both of us and for the public. I know it sounds bourgeois to go from talking about housing affordability to parks, but this isn't airy-fairy. This is a real situation that we have on our hands. And we, when we accepted that federal money, committed to holding up our part of the bargain with staff time and resources that we need to pay.
And one other thing I would say about parks is unlike the other two things on our, you know, that we agreed to as goals, this one conceivably can be handled in two years.
Yes, yes.
We can work out Milwaukee Bay Park. We'll have designs and those new parks will be under construction in two years or close to construction in two years. These are, these are things that can be wrapped up in two years. Unlike, you know, affordable housing will be on there forever. Climate will be on there forever, you know? So I think that's the other thing to keep in mind. Is that this is not setting something onto a goal that will necessarily, you know, it might even be done in less than two years, who knows?
Not a push.
But I do think it has a term in this.
Yes, yes.
When we're, when we're saying it, I guess I'd like a little bit more information about what you think it is. We are not a parks district. We are not, so when you say we had a commitment, that commitment is, is to see the projects be built. I, we, we are not having a conversation right now about forming a district. And we have IGAs for park maintenance. And those, we know that we have ongoing conversations about those agreements. And we have been having conversations about, you know, Milwaukee Bay Park. And all of us have now, the mayor's going next week, we've all testified in front of the board of county commissioners. I would like to know a little bit more about what it is.
So when we're talking about the commitment we made, it wasn't just to build them and turn them loose into the wild. It was to make sure that those parks are a functional part of the city. We know from the way our conversations are going around Milwaukee Bay Park that there's a lot of reluctance on the part of this current board of commission, or county commissioners board, however you want to say that, to support our parks system. So yes, there is an IGA in place that nominally might provide some basic, very basic, not up to our standards, maintenance if we add three new parks. I do not think that it is likely we will get through talking about Milwaukee Bay Park without some demand needed. I don't see a future where we're going to have an agreement with NCPRD that encompasses everything we've done in our portfolio when we add three new parks. I think there's been a push for that. And I can't blame them. We're, we are adding work to the poorest district out there.
Which often complaints that it doesn't count as parks.
Yes, and that is unfortunate because it hates Milwaukee and both prove as opponents whom we are not. We are all in this together. We are all struggling with a deficit of funding for our parks systems.
Well, I think when we talk about goals, we need to be very clear about what our roles and capabilities are. And we are not starting a parks district. And that can't be part of this goal for the next two years even. And that's basically what would be required for what, what we were talking about. To take the work away from the parks district and bring that work into the city. Well, then what is it? What are we talking about? How are, I mean, how are, explain to me what is, what is it? Not just the problem, we understand the problem. We understand that, that NCPRD is not funded well enough. We all acknowledge that. We understand that we've got some agreements that we need to work out with them. What does that mean?
And we have some, you know, probably some financial obligations that come, that will come with that. And it's, I mean, the it is nebulous, I think you're right, but there's, there's, we don't know.
Are we talking about-
We don't know what the answers are.
-a group of people for the city, so now we're just not, we're not just talking about one staff person to achieve this goal. Are we talking about hiring an entire maintenance group?
I have no idea. I mean, that's part of the it, is figuring that out.
That's why I said research and-
Well, talk about something that doesn't have an end date on it. Talk about something that literally is forever. That would be something.
Oh, no.
Like hiring a whole crew of, to say that responsibilities that our parks district actually has to do?
Well, if that has to happen, then that has to come with funding. I mean, I wouldn't be here for like, let's make that a goal and we make the, we fund that. I mean, that would have to come with a funding, we'd have to figure out a funding source. That's the it, not the hot, do we, you know? There's, there's just so many unknown variables.
And to be perfectly honest, we don't know enough about where the board of commission-
Why can't I just say that correctly? We don't know where the county is on this yet.
The parks board is actually, perhaps that they're aware of.
Yes, thank you, I should just say that. But I want to be clear that it is our county commission that is at play here. For folks who don't track, that the parks board is the same thing. These are our commissioners that we, we do not know where they're going to come down.
So, we don't. And those negotiations are going to begin on August 12th. We have been setting the stage for them with our testimony thus far, and we will continue to do that on Thursday.
Negotiations are beginning on August 12th?
There we go.
Okay, first I've heard that, okay?
So, well, we, we-
You're talking about Milwaukee Bay Park. That's one piece, that's not-
That's the piece, well, so Commissioner Savas has said that he not only needs this construction IGA to be agreed to, but he believes that we need our entire IGA to be rewritten. We disagree. We think that a construction IGA is all that's required in this moment. The construction IGA they sent us is ridiculous. It includes all kinds of things way past construction and nothing to do with construction. Have to do with Happy Valley and their experiences there. So that's what begins on the 12th is the conversation. We will be sending them a red line version, which I think you all have seen, of their contract that they sent us. And then on the 12th, we will be sitting down with them and start that conversation. It, by its nature, will not be the simple straightforward construction IGA, because that's not what Paul wants. So our hope, we requested that a second commissioner be in the room. Because I personally believe that Paul is having one conversation with us and another conversation with his commission. And I need that commission to be aware of the reality of the conversation.
Well, it was clear last week when Councilor Balfour and I went that, I mean, the chair as much as said that Happy Valley is why they're, you know, that's the, that's the mother thing.
Yep, yep. So, in any case, I think parks is going to be a moving target for a while. I think we are allowed to hire consultants for the parts, the, the, design of the three neighborhood parks out of the ARPA money. And I think that gets us a pretty long way, isn't it, to this, right?
But you need staff to manage the consulting.
Yep. Do we need a full-time staffer to do that?
I am not the person who can answer that much.
Well, and it, I mean, once, the consultant for a design process is one staff, there's also the construction, right? And there's-
Yeah, no, it's going to be the process. But I think we've all experienced how long these processes take. They're not, if tomorrow we decide, okay, let's do this, we'll be damn lucky to be looking at designs a year from now.
Well, how many years does it take to complete the Kellogg, the path?
The Charlie Trail?
The Charlie Trail, no, the path, yeah, but through the-
Crumber, through Crumber, sorry, next to Kellogg Creek.
Wait, 17? I was thinking Kellogg Creek, the Crumber path.
Well, I mean, this is an interesting point. I mean, they actually did the, they did an expedited design process for two of these parks before.
Yeah.
And-
None of us were very impressed with the results.
Yeah, I was just saying, it had its flaws, but it was done in about four or five months.
Right, and it was crappy. So I, I think that if we're going to do a good process and come up with a good park design that are going to be, serve all of our community with an eye to equity, with an eye to folks that don't have access to parks, all the things, it's going to take longer than the six months that they did that process.
And what you just described-
That's not even counting finding the consultant and hiring the consultant.
And what that entails is a lot of staff time.
I mean, especially given, because that is a lot about outreach. And so, you know, I mean, the-
Consultants, we, when we did, when we did our vision, we had, well, actually, the Climate Action Plan is a better example. We had two consultants. We had a consultant designing our Climate Action Plan and we had a consultant doing our management. I don't believe that we will have to commit an entire MTE to this process for a while. I think at least a year before we have to commit that kind of stuff. Again, as you keep saying, we are not the experts in that. But I've been doing this now for 100 years, eight years, it just feels like a hundred. And I have a pretty good idea.
You're talking about the three parks.
I'm talking about the three parks because that's what's on the table for us. Milwaukee Bay Park, we theoretically have a parks district that's going to build that. So all that is theoretically should be lawyer time, which is going to happen one way or another. Which was theoretically already kind of happening. So that's, doesn't require a goal for us to negotiate that contract. And negotiate or not negotiate a new IGA.
And figure out funding and help NCPRD, yeah, try to figure out funding. And, you know, there's so many pieces to this, it's not one piece.
Yep.
Figure out funding.
How to go for more funding. How to go for a funding level that will adequately support our parks. How, so that we don't have to hire a maintenance group, right? You know, I mean, it is, I do remember this about the, in 2014, they went out for additional, to raise the rate. They wanted to raise it from 54 cents to 85 or something like that. It passed in Milwaukee, it passed in a couple of precincts in Oak Grove, and it failed everywhere else. It was, I mean, I don't know if we were the lowest in the state, but we are something like one order of, I mean, ours is 54 cents. Over in Walton Valley, which is, we were in all those lovely parks, they're paying $2 per 100.
I think Bend is $1.80 or something like that, so, yeah. Now, it's ridiculously low, it was a ridiculously low ask when they did it. And they tied governance to it rather than doing two separate things. They handled it about as poorly as, as a thing like that can be handled. And then they didn't support it. So, that's, again, though, that is our parks district. It is not our job, nor is it our place, to cause our parks district to do their job.
We, I mean, we couldn't even put that-
I can see that this council can put that, right?
We can advocate us and our, we can do what, we can do the advocacy at the board, but they're the ones that would have to put the question to the voters. There again, we are not the one, we're not the driver of any kind of funding process.
No, but having all of these dialogues requires staff time. Having all these dialogues and figuring out what it is we want to ask for. I mean, we don't really know yet. I mean, we want to ask, we want Milwaukee Bay Park built, but, I mean, we don't know what's going to be the answer. And I think there's just so many levels and layers and it's appealing and, and it's, there's so many things going on. It's Milwaukee Bay Park, it's the three new parks, it's the maintenance, the, you know, I, I don't see it as the design of the three new parks as much as the-
The ongoing maintenance. And I think that is, so you've got designed, then you've got built, then you've got to worry about maintenance. That's at least two years on. Probably closer to three. Before we have to worry about, before we have to have maintenance in place. Granted, we have to do things before that point, get them. But finished parks that need maintaining are three years on.
When I have talked to staff about this a few years, it's been clear that that process needs to be had before you get to the point where you have a built park.
Sure.
So I, I think your timeline is wrong.
No, all I said was it's three years before we have a park that needs to be taken.
Well, and I'll point out one example, which Ann knows well, of why, to some degree, we can't put off maintenance till after they're built, which is Balfour Street Park. Balfour Street Park has apparently some fruit trees. And the neighborhood wants to keep the fruit. In, in the course of the prior master planning, neighborhood wanted to keep the trees and NCPRD said, no, we can't keep fruit trees, that's too much maintenance, that's too messy, that's too blah blah blah. They, I mean, I think there are some in the neighborhood who'd like to, you know, do more fruit trees, have more of a permaculture kind of a park. I don't know if that's where the process will go. I'm not trying to prejudge that in any way. I'm just saying that's an example of where you can't put off the maintenance question until, I mean, it plays into the park design.
Right.
It plays into the park design.
But there's policy things that have to occur, right? We have to make a decision, okay, are we just going to spitball here? Are we willing to create a, some kind of a fee that we then take over the maintenance of our own neighborhood parks and NCPRD continues to run the big parks? And then do we want to go out to the community and have the conversation? Okay, in order to have really great parks, this is what we think we need to do. Because NCPRD doesn't have enough money to do all the things.
And that's another part of it.
Right, sure. But these are all things that I think there is some time lag for. We can be talking about it, we can be working on it. There will be a certain amount of staff time, but I do not believe enough staff time that it rises to the level of goal. And that is not even weighing it against the question of what we're throwing out to do that as a goal.
And I fundamentally disagree with your assessment based on the number of conversations that I have had with staff where I have asked questions about what is the process we would need to take? What do we need to be thinking about? And the response I get is, we need to start. And six months to a year, we can manage to wait. We can't wait longer than that.
Potentially, we need to start in a year.
Not potentially, Mayor.
I have been the only one on this council that has actually passed two bonds.
That's great.
And I've been part of the process of passing two bonds.
Why do we hire experts who know how to do their job if we are going to ignore the input they provide around how to do this work?
Well, I haven't actually gotten that input.
I have not received that input either. And so I'm, I'm actually like a little, I really think we need to like pump the brakes a little bit on that because I don't, yours, what we're saying is, if, if we decide that we're going to have this conversation now about all of this and, and talk and generate funding sources, then we have, then, then that's going to require this amount of staff time. But we haven't, I don't, I don't agree that that is the timeline that we should be working from. And I don't agree that isn't, that there aren't a lot of political conversations that have to happen first because we have, we are not a point now to start having conversations about what the relationship is and what the funding sources-
conversations about what the relationship is and what the funding sources might be, because we still have a lot of government-to-government conversations still to have with the Black and the County Board of County Commissioners. We are not there. And this goal, I think, is prema, I think it's premature, and it's potentially setting, sending a message we don't intend to send. We need to be super careful about how we're having this conversation around this goal, because what I hear is putting, we're, we're, we're steps ahead of where we are. And we do need to have a conversation about what we are leaving behind and leaving off the table when we say we are going to hit pause on housing, because there is a lot that we still could be doing. We are not at a point where we can say, after the time that we've spent on housing, we have pulled all the levers on policy. So before we jump to housing, I think we should close out the conversation about parks. Do we have a request for staff here? Is there more information that, because it sounds like we are on different pages. I think it's because some of us don't want to hear what we are being told, but if there is a way to resolve that by asking staff for something specific, then can we please make that request as soon?
What's the quest?
That's my question. I feel like I have a pretty clear understanding of what we need, and that's what I've been fighting for. I'm hearing that that is not something that you all feel important about.
Well, here's how I feel about it. We will be doing the parks work that we will be doing one way or another, whether it's a parks, whether it's a goal, it's gonna happen. It has to happen because we have, there's money coming down the funnel, we have, what big park run the bubble, we will be doing that much work.
Where do you think that work comes from?
It's like anything in government, there are things that arise that you just have to deal with. With the pandemic, a goal, did we deal with it? Did we come up with the staff time that we required in order to deal with the thing that came up?
It's a great example because dealing with the pandemic has just about broken this city, and we got through it gracefully, but it cost a lot of people a lot of their lives, including housing. And we are talking about diverting resources from the biggest, most important, most expensive single budget item in households, household budget. Literally, 25% of Milwaukians are spending more than 50% of their income on housing.
I'm familiar with the figures.
Well, I'm sorry, but you're not giving it high enough importance. When you tell me, hold on, let's hold on to housing question, I want to talk about parks, this is what I hear. We cannot have these two conversations in a vacuum because they are related. We are taking resources from the most important thing that affects Milwaukieans' lives to have a conversation about how we're going to manage and maintain some parks when we haven't even had the political conversations with the partner. We need to have those conversations before we dedicate staff time to start figuring those questions out, because we don't even know what the questions are. I'm, we can't determine, it would be irresponsible for us to determine and to tell staff, this is the quest, because we still are having a conversation with a jurisdictional partner about what that relationship looks like right now in our existing relationships, our existing agreements. And that is an important conversation, and I will say what I've already said several times before. I think we could hold upon making parks the goal for six months to a year, based on my understanding of the work it will take and the timelines involved. What I have not heard is any sort of engagement with that proposal.
I guess I would also add that I think, you know, we, we talk about the staffing for all of this, and to me, the park is such a hard thing to put your head around because there are different, there are so many different parts to it, and some of them are political and some of them are not political, and, you know, some are more financial. But the staff who are doing this are the staff who are supposed to be doing our climate goal and our tree work. So, I mean, we are stretching those staffs and those goals then.
And it is our leadership, it is our directors, it is our city manager, and it is our assistant city manager, who have other jobs, but they are also tasked with different.
And I would go back on the, on the point the counselor at Balfour Center was making, about housing being the most pressing need for families, I mean, I think that's hard to, hard to deny. But we're not stopping housing, I mean, we're not stopping working on housing. There's a lot of work that still goes forward, there's the CET work, there's our work on Kakahoe Point, you know, there's, there's 500-plus units in the pipeline. There are, I, I think it's true, we haven't done everything we could do, but I think it's also true, like we said last time, that let's let what we've done take some shape and take some force and see what we learn from it, and maybe in two years, it's time to put housing back as, as a goal, but let's let what we put into place play out and see how it plays out and see what we need then.
And I want to add, I have, you're so happy, because I have a four-page speech, single space, single space written up here, so you're just getting little sections here. And I'm sorry, to some degree, that I didn't give you the whole speech, because I think that there's been some very concerning miscommunication and misinformation flying around the community about what goals are and what we do around housing.
Yes, I totally agree.
What a city can do, what the county does, and, and I'm deeply disturbed that, that that's going on. We've gone all over the place at this point, but I will give you this piece. There is a mismatch that we have going on right now. When we're talking about what we can do and what we're already committed to do, we already committed in housing and housing affordability to ongoing work around translating all of those housing policies we put together in the comprehensive plan into code. If you're not familiar with the language of city government, policies are already talked about the ideas, the values, what we want to see happen. Code is where we, rubber meets the road, put it into client. We have a huge code package coming in December that's going to put the first slew of that into place, and that's all around individual house units, you know, single, we call them single-family residents, single-unit residents, whatever, and updating that code. And that's going to enable a lot more middle housing to be built. We have, after that, a work plan that Laura Arzider-Planner shared with us in April that stretches out to 2026 and encompasses even more code work that is also coming out of that comprehensive plan, and that's further code work that's going to streamline code, that's going to talk about multi-family, that's going to look at how we can pull more levers and make it as easy as possible to do the work of building housing that is affordable to people. That goes out to 2026. It also encompasses the required work around HDP 2003. We're committed to that work no matter what. Against that backdrop, we have this capacity issue where we're out of planners. There is no more money, there are no more planners to do more housing work at this point in time. The planners are the people who are gonna do this work, they're up to their necks in the housing code updates, and they are handling the flood of development applications that we have coming our way, which is, you know, the 500 units of affordable housing that we talked about already, the hundreds of units of apartment-grade housing that are also coming our way. This is a good thing, I'm glad that our planners are busy, okay? But we don't have more people, we will not get more staff to do more things if we have housing as a goal. Entire community development team is working on housing. There is no more there, we can't ask them to do even more than they are already doing. And this is the thing I keep trying to say, and I feel like it's not getting across, we're not walking away from this goal, we're not ignoring it, we're also at a point where we, we can't add more to it because there's no one to do the work, and there is no money to put toward hiring more people to do the work. See, I'm pretty glad I didn't do the whole speech.
No. I love to hear those speeches have flow.
No, if you cast Colin over you, he'd be terrible.
Did you practice it, Colin? And we're not kidding you?
I don't think you really want her.
So we are in a very interesting place where we, we know that we have to do more work on housing, we know that we have to do work on parks, whether we want to or not, it's coming. We have to continue to do our climate work, and we have to do our equity work, those are all things that we have to do for our community. We've often framed our goals as being around what the staff capacity, the budget, funding to do, the things, all the things that whichever goal entails. I can't remember what all of the parameters and opportunities are in the, what did we get, 4.65 million?
You know, the ARPA dollars?
ARPA dollars. Perhaps there is a way to go back and sit down and look at those dollars and say, okay, this parameter right here could allow us to maybe work on this, or this parameter right here could allow us to maybe work on that. I think we should reexamine that and figure out if there is some room for a temporary staff or whatever is required to do things, because everybody at this diocese is right. That's, that's the honest truth. Everybody here is right. We should be doing more housing, we should be doing more climate, we should be doing our equity work, we gotta work on the parks, and we need to remove the dam. All of that's true, it's all true. We have had a process where we've picked three goals in the past because that was staff capacity. This is not the past, this is the year when somebody handed us 106, 4.65 million dollars. I think we should maybe take a step back and look at what, what are the opportunities embedded in that to do all of these things that we know we have to do? Because I do think there are more levers we can pull on housing. And I do know that our planning staff and our community development staff are flat out. And I do know that we're gonna be doing parks work whether we want to or not. So when you have all these things that are true, then you have to go, okay, so what are other ways to work, that's what are other options, what's another way to possibly solve this problem? And I think that's personally what the next conversation needs to be, is is there a way to leverage any of those funds towards doing all of these things that we know we have to do?
Have you guys looked at the budget? These funds can't be used for parks and they cannot be used for housing.
I don't know if you can.
I did look at the budget, these funds cannot be used for parks, they cannot be used for housing because of our, of where we sit in the CDB chain running process, like how, how we're designated under CDB.
So when you say it can't be used for housing, it can't be used to buy nails and build houses, or can't be used for a planner to do policy work?
It's non allowable use under the funds, so, and I, I'm sure that there are 60 ways that. If you guys would like to end tonight and you would like to have that beer asked, you're welcome to have that as your asking.
But they can be used for hiring a consultant on parks.
They cannot, they cannot.
Yeah.
The, the funds that we got from the state. Can be used for hiring an equity consultant to do our master planning work, that was very specifically called out as a portion of the work. It cannot be used for managing the contractor or managing actually all the engagement work that goes into it from public facilities.
Well, yeah, I think it would be useful to have a little more granularity on that, on both the ARPA money and the limits on the, on the state money. And maybe the time, maybe, you know, also, if that means we don't discuss it till September, we will know more about where conversations are going with the county.
Is there a way to make a compromise?
Well, that's what I was trying to do, but.
What I hear you saying is, it's at least, you could see six months to a year, could we put housing on the goal for one year and revisit it in one year and see what all we can do from that now until that one-year term?
Yeah, that's, I think that's an option too, we can, we can see what we can get accomplished on housing, we can, Angel has started a list of, you know, bullet, of things that we need to do on housing, levers we can pull. We can all sit down and look at that list and go, okay, which of these things are we gonna do either way? Which of these things could we get going over the next year? And is that sufficient to where we would feel comfortable having that process continue to play out well, then turn our goal to parks? It's a possibility, it's a good idea. I think those are just both things that we should explore.
If we're going to do that, we cannot just have it be what do we want to do, it has to be with a staff capacity to complete any additional work, and how do we make that happen?
Well, I mean, then the same, then this, I mean, we need to be putting the same question toward parks, and I don't think that, I, I mean, I don't think it's fair to put that on housing and not parks. Why are we saying housing has one, has a one-year goal, why aren't we saying parks has a one-year goal? I just, I mean, great, I love compromises, I actually love it a lot, I, I'm willing to say, you know what, this is the one time that we need to actually have four goals. We've said three, I understand it, but we, we do need to, we need to be like working both of these things, and we still have this, 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 and this. There are specific, we, we know the roadmap for housing, we actually have a much better roadmap for housing than we do parks. I'd like to see where we are on parks in the year, where is that conversation in the year?
Your proposal to move it to four goals illustrates that I'm still, still not saying it clearly or loudly enough, that we, we are at capacity. We need to choose.
Unless we can find more capacity.
Sure, if we can find more money to do more things, of course, that changes the equation. But we are at capacity, I don't, I don't know how else to say it.
But that is true, as Angel says, both ways.
Right.
So right now, what we're generally thinking about is that the parks work will be in Peter's volume, right? What's Peter's volume?
Everything.
Well, 12 master plans, the trees, climate, he's full out, Natalie's full out, so. So if we do parks, are we then hiring somebody else then to do parks? So in either case, if we are at capacity with current staff, then we're at capacity. Because we're at capacity on that staff too. So to do either one, we're going to have to increase capacity somewhat.
It's not, it's never that simple. Our entire community development department is working on housing. All of them are touching housing work in some fashion. If we are doing parks, we have work that comes down that is going to land on Ellie, that is going to land on Pam, that is going to land on Peter, that is going to land on Natalie, that is going to land on probably other people that I can't identify because I don't actually direct staff. But I've run organizations before and I know what it looks like when you're at capacity and you have to make hard choices. Otherwise, people, people fizzle out and you don't get the work done. So what I'm trying to say is that if you make those choices, that's, that's the whole reason we have been so successful the past five years. The reason we have achieved as much as we have is because we have committed to staying within our capacity as much as we possibly can. And we've exceeded it over the past year and a half because we've also had fires and ice storms and a pandemic and, and, and. And yes, those crises unfold on the people in our community and it is terrible. But we have to be realistic about the amount of work that we can do. My understanding through staff is that we can probably manage to put off doing work on parks for six months to a year, but no...
And that, well, that's a, so you're talking about the three.
I've been trying not to say anything. I'm really sorry. But the planning for the parks, I'm hiring somebody next week. Like it's going live as a position where them working someone like it's, it's actually happening now. I think that the question is at what point do all of them know more? And at what point can you make different decisions about funding than other things? So I just, I need to be clear, like we're, we have to do certain parts work. In case the Senator representative are watching tonight, I do know where you're hiring these people.
Yes.
Maybe.
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry, and that's a consultant contract?
No, I actually have to have an, I have to have an actual project manager for three parks. It's enough work that even with a contractor on board, just to learn what happens in the city, like to know where you're doing your public engagement, to be able to make sure it gets through planning and zoning. There's going to be a planning process. There's just a bunch of stuff that goes into it as a construction manager. It's the same thing we did with the library where Laila was doing about 50% of her job and then we hired an out-of-house construction manager. We consulted for that work after, after some time. Yeah, we hired a construction manager. Laila was still doing it for a few years in her time through the construction.
So I'm still not sure what you're saying you're doing. You're hiring a staffer or you're...
I'm hiring, I'm hiring a project manager for the three, the construction of the three parks.
So that's a limited term employment?
It is. It is limited term and it is, it has to be done by the time we meet the new city hall. Because I double booked those funds at that point. And that is then someone who needs to be a manager, the project manager needs to be a manager. Just trying to highlight that it's not just neat and tidy and tied up and taken care of. Adding people adds to it.
Well, it's interesting to me because that almost sounds like, oh, we hired somebody. That's what we do with each of these goals. So that's like in person, we hired to do a goal.
So if, if you want me to, I'm happy to talk, but nobody's called on me tonight. So I don't, I know this is your conversation and I'm trying to respect that. It's up to us to whether or not I'm going to answer.
We love you.
So the first part is, is when we decided that we were going to take these funds, we had to hire somebody. We're using a highly limited position that we actually had vacant in order to hit the deadline. That person's sole job is going to be making sure that the three projects are constructed. That person will not be working on any of the intergovernmental affairs work that is going to be required over the next month. So it's not going to be involved in any of the IGA's or any of the other stuff that you all are going to mind about tonight. If, what I have said and what I had said to all of you individually was if, if all we care about is the construction of three parks, this doesn't need to be a goal. If this is about our relationship with NCPRD and funding and bigger things than that, then it does need to be a goal. So that was sort of when I was talking to each of you, that was the parameters that I was placing on it. So if you're comfortable with us working on just constructing these three parks, we can do that. We have to do that. But it doesn't get you sort of that broader goal, relationship stuff and IGA stuff with people's...
Well, in Milwaukee Bay Park.
Correct. And it doesn't answer the question of what happens once those three parks are built? It does happen.
That is...
So realistically, when is the timeline for those three parks to be completed?
So, and the mayor and I have talked about this. The construction of the projects is that they would be done in August of 2024, with the punch list completed in December of 2024. It's going to take us two summers in order to construct the parks just because of water. You never know when you're going to get rain out of a construction site on a park. So we need the extra season to make sure we can hit the deadlines. The issues that you start to run into is depending on how you maintain the parks, you actually need revenue in hand in order to pay for those services, whether it's to pay for the staff or the equipment or the other pieces. That's the piece that's going to come sooner than the three-year mark. So in order to have construction through, not construction, I'm sorry, people using the market maintenance, depending on how we do the maintenance agreement, you would need to have that solidified within 18 months of us knowing, you know, us opening the parks. The second piece is I also need to know kind of where we are with the IGA's or I don't know, and it actually comes from maybe, thank you, you, you said it perfectly. I can design a park one way and CPRD can design it another way. And if they're maintaining it, they're going to insist that they design it their way, not our way. So we do need to have some of that clarity in order to make a determination about who is, is actually making the final calls on the design activities that we have.
And that's soon.
Uh, we will be, we actually will be done with all the design work within the year. So that's part of why we have to put the position out. We've got to get the consultants on board. This, this actually is going to be a very, Peter was, he was nervous that we haven't even posted positions out as of, I think, Monday. Um, but it's, it is the tightest schedule, construction schedule that we've done. I've ever managed with that team. But I made a commitment to the Senator and the representative that we will have the funds out and we are committed to having those funds expended and the parks developed within that.
But so like you said, I mean, I, and yeah. So if we're going to try to have a design done by the end of the year.
Correct.
We have to have ironed out those questions.
Correct.
With NCPRD about
All of this.
Who makes the call on maintenance? Or, you know, what, what we can build because who's going to maintain it and blah, blah, blah.
And, and how...
So it doesn't sound to me like it's a year out.
It's not. It's actually probably within three to four months. That you have to have those decisions made in order for us to even start this process. Or at least a decision is all of you about where you want staff going. But depending on the decisions that may, are made, it's a lot of staff workload actually to, to do additional steps in order to... So I take it maybe six months. There you go.
Before we need a decision, we're going to have a decision. That's what we need, we need six months. So that's just the conversations with commissioners.
Well, I mean...
Burning that out and us deciding what we're willing to do beyond that.
But some of those decisions aren't for us to decide. Some of those decisions would be for our residents to decide. Some of those decisions would be for NCPRD to decide. There's a lot of decisions that go beyond just us deciding who we want to have do that. There's then the decision of what does our community want for us to do. So I do think that it's a two-fold.
What meeting in September do we have some bandwidth on?
Uh, we can move anywhere. So if you, the first meeting in September is the 7th.
I want to say it's the 7th on that.
It is the 7th. So it's the 7th or 14th or 21st. If you all want this to be on the 7th, we can pull this off the agenda and move it out. How much time would you like?
It's been two hours until...
No, it's an hour and a half.
Figure it for an hour and a half?
Yep. We'll make it happen.
Final thoughts or questions or...
Well, I guess it would be, you know, it would be good to know that in what ways the ARPA money gives us flexibility.
Some way to...
In, yeah, where we might have some other one in place on that. I mean, I know you had mapped out like, you know, some of it's reimbursement, some of it's, you know...
The only money that was reimbursement was CareTACT.
Oh.
Uh, so all the ARPA funds have the same rules and their structure. But I'm, I'm happy to get you guys a meeting ready.
All right. Well, then to be continued. I'll just say that in case it wasn't clear, I don't believe we can stop having housing as a goal based on the multitude of conversations I've had since our last session. I don't believe we can not have that as a goal. I believe we still have work, that additional work we can do that will make a difference in people's lives. I also personally believe that we can evolve, that we can be moving process along on parks while continuing to do more work on housing and collecting. And in a year, we have another conversation and see where we are. Now, in a year, we may have figured out how to fund climate and that can come off the list. That just becomes part of the operations of the state. Could happen.
That would be a good goal.
I think that would be awesome.
Well, we just find a way to embed equity in everything so that equity doesn't have to be a goal.
Does mean we are on it.
Everything you do. Exactly. Absolutely. It's absolutely the way it should be. But it may take us a little while to get to that. It's taken us 400 years to screw that up. Probably took us a little bit to get to that. Good work, everybody. Fierce, heartfelt work. I'm very proud of this council.
Before we adjourn, the question came up earlier about whether we wanted to continue in person or not. I like meeting in person, but I am going to defer to the people which and how they feel about that. So, you know, I, I, we don't have to decide tonight, but I just wanted to say that. I will go either way, whatever.
Yeah, I concur entirely. I prefer the in-person meetings, but again, I would prefer to, to have you because you have a, you have this people.
I really appreciate everyone keeping their masks on today. I really, you know, having the door open. I'm glad we didn't have a room full of people. So I think that those are all sort of considerations for us to be thinking about and making that decision. I hope that we can work out the glitch so that we can have a better hybrid experience. You know, we know it's a work in progress. And thank you so much for stepping up to the better way. Very good work. Thank you.
You got your workout.
Oh, really? He's never letting Scott one make a decision.
Scott laid a lot of really good groundwork. So he, since he will be watching this at some point, thanks Scott for, for that. And thank you all. Appreciate you.
So, and obviously the Delta variant is a moving target, right? So in two weeks, we may have a very different world than the one we have tonight. So I don't expect us to make a decision tonight, but I, I, are you with us that we're going to let? Okay. So basically, you know, and we're happy to have the conversation if you want. Or thoughts or advice or whatever.
I guess my, my ask would be that, you know, you know, everybody, you know, if, if we need to go with a hybrid meeting, then we put as much behind making that successful as we possibly can because I am, things, it's, it's, things have changed. Things feel very different. Please don't move this to hybrid. Honestly, tonight was a disaster. I mean, I love that you guys are being so sweet about it, but this was really painful. So if we're going to do it, I really would appreciate just because councilors are out here. Either, either or for now until Scott can figure out a timer.
Okay. Then I, yeah, so.
Speaking to you.
Yeah, let's, let's look at it again in a couple of weeks and see, see where everything's at. And then we can make that decision.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? And I would entertain your motion.
Do a chair?
I'll second.
And then move the second into adjournment. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.